One minute. Counselors on Zoom, can you hear us? Yes, okay, cool, thanks. My little work session. Script is not on here. Okay, you guys good? You guys good? I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. As a reminder to the public, there will be no public comments taken and the council will take no formal action. At the 5:30 work session, we have downtown trees, community forestry commission recommendations, and I'm going to turn it over to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, Dan Rude and Senior Planner with Community Development Department. And joining me this evening are several members from the Community Forestry Commission. To my left is Justin Marble, the Chair of the Forestry Commission, and member Bruce Countryman, and Vice Chair Mark Makajima. And they're here in their capacity of advising city council on tree-related issues within the city. And if there are any particular technical questions that come up, we have the experts here that can respond directly. So very thankful for them being here this evening. So I have a presentation I'd like to go through, hopefully fairly quickly, and then we can get into a discussion with the council about a direction to resolve some of the street tree issues downtown. Thank you. So the purpose of tonight's work session is to provide an opportunity for discussion about short and long-term solutions to street tree problems occurring in the downtown area. And there's a specific short-term approach that staff has bring forward that we would like to move forward with. We'd like to ask the city councils thoughts on that particular approach. So the issue is that the downtown area includes enhanced streetscape that's not found in other parts of the city. And I'm sure you're all familiar with what the enhanced streetscape looks like. It includes the street trees, the tree grates, and the red decorative pavers within the primary downtown core area of Forest Grove. It includes several blocks, basically including Main Street, Pacific Avenue, 21st Avenue, Council Street, College Way, and the west side of Ash Street. And again, this enhanced streetscape is not found in any other part of the city. Installation of the enhanced streetscape started in the late 1990s. It began with a community development block grant, federal funds. It included the installation of decorative streetlights, new sidewalks downtown, the brick pavers, the street trees, and the installation of 84 metal tree grates. But over the years, time has definitely taken its toll on the downtown streetscape. Excellent. This map just shows an illustration of where the enhanced streetscape is located downtown, and so the area, the block faces highlighted in yellow are those block faces that include the street trees and the tree grates. Next slide, please. So the issue, I have several photos here, fairly recent, showing what the issues are. And this particular image was taken on Main Street at the corner of Main and Pacific Avenue. And you can see that in this particular image, the tree grate is definitely starting to lift. And there are also some issues with the decorative brick pavers in this particular location. Excellent. Another example of where the decorative pavers are starting to sink a bit, causing some tripping hazard issues with the tree grates and also the water meter cover as well. This particular location is also on Main Street. Excellent, please. Another Main Street photo, you can see where in this particular instance, the metal tree grate was cut out in a square shape, which is not the best approach since the tree grates are actually designed to be enlarged in a circular fashion as the tree matures and gets larger. I suspect that in this particular instance, the reason that the tree grate was cut out in a square fashion was to accommodate the electrical outlet for the tree lighting in this particular situation. So but that's not a, definitely not a best practice. This particular photo is on 21st Avenue. Again, it shows the tree grate lifting, also causing a potential tripping hazard. Excellent. And we have several examples also on Council Street. This is on Council Street near the Fry's Athletics Store. This is a larger tree, but again, you can see where the tree grate is starting to lift and separating from the brick pavers. And again, another potential tripping hazard. Next slide. This is also on Council Street near 19th Avenue, near the accountant's office on Council Street, south of City Hall. You can actually see where the sidewalk panel was actually taken out and a new panel put in with the newer concretes. This particular photo really doesn't do the situation justice in terms of the magnitude of the problem because it really is a large degree of separation between the tree grate and the sidewalk. And you can't really tell from this image clearly, but there is a large rock that's been placed on top of the tree grate that kind of helped hold it down some. So definitely not a good situation. Excellent. So we, an assessment was done. The city hired an arborist, a professional arborist, to prepare an assessment of the downtown street trees. And the assessment found that 24 trees were causing conflicts with the streets, sidewalk, or parking lot clearance, and that the trees require pruning. Several of the trees are actually, the canopies are quite large and starting to cause conflict with the building growing towards the building, and they really do need to be pruned back. Eight trees were noticed having recent cuts to the roots or the tree base, and/or there was damage as a result of the surrounding tree grates where the tree was actually causing, the tree grate was actually causing cuts into the tree or tree girdling. Public works recently attended to the grates to prevent further damages best they could. Many of the grates, several of the grates have been removed over the last couple of years. Four trees were identified as needing upper crown and/or structural pruning. And 30 trees were affected by the compacted soils resulting in exposed or girdled roots. And that tends to be a problem with street trees or trees in an urban environment where you have compacted soils. So that's definitely a problem. Next slide, please. So earlier this year, several members of the Community Forestry Commission, Bruce and Justin in particular, went out and did a further evaluation of the trees downtown. And they identified 56 locations where consideration should be given to removing the tree grates because of lifting and potential for tripping hazards. 20 trees that should be removed and possibly new trees replanted in those locations, although the Forestry Commission did have some discussion about whether or not it makes sense to replace trees in all locations. And perhaps if trees are not replanted, using those locations for other purposes such as perhaps installation, public art, putting in some art plants or something like that to liven the downtown streetscape. 13 trees were identified as in need of pruning for sidewalk clearance and to address vision clearance issues at street intersections and with signs on the right of. Next slide, please. So this map is from the inventory that the Forestry Commission did. And the purple color on the map shows locations where the tree grate should be removed, replaced, and the sidewalk should be fixed if needed. The green checkmarks indicate trees where there's pruning that should be done. The blue checkmarks show where the tree should be removed and consideration given to replanting. And as you can see, a lot of those trees are up along Main Street, between Pacific Avenue and 21st Avenue. There are also a few on Ash Street, well, to be looked at further. And then the CFC is looking at locations to remove the tree and not replacing them, but they still need to do more work on those precise locations so those don't show up on the map per se. Next slide, please. So shifting into the requirements by city code, who's responsible for the long-term tree maintenance and care? The city's Code of Ordinances and the Development Code both place the burden on the property owners adjacent to the sidewalk, adjacent to the public right-of-way for the upkeep of the sidewalk and the street tree. This requirement applies citywide regardless of the location, and it applies to the enhanced streetscape area where the city actually went in and installed the enhanced streetscape. It wasn't the business owners or the adjacent property owners that installed the enhanced streetscape or the street trees. But yet they're still responsible for the maintenance of those trees because of the requirements for the city code. Again, and again, this is the same requirement that applies to the residential neighborhoods where street trees are planted as a condition of the development approval. Many of the downtown property owners have had trouble keeping up with maintenance, and the number of requests for tree removal have increased pretty significantly in the last few years where business owners would like to have trees removed or the city to come out and actually prune the trees, take care of the trees. The city budgeted funds a couple of years ago to hire a contractor to go out and do that work. That was back in 2023. The city released an RFP, actually a request for qualifications, an RFQ for on-call services for tree pruning and removal, also taking out the tree grates and then replanting trees as needed. So actually sourcing the trees and then replanting the trees. Unfortunately, we didn't find any contractors that were interested in doing that complete comprehensive scope of services. Landscaping firms tend not to necessarily do all of this work, and I think that's why we didn't get interested in the on-call services, plus it being on-call, I think that was also. So but the lack of upkeep of the downtown streetscape has definitely resulted in safety problems, as you saw from the picture. And there have been several instances where pedestrians have tripped and several people have been injured, and we've had some recent occurrences. And so something really does need to be done to take care of the issue. And due to the severity of the issue and the need to do something, staff has identified a short-term approach that we're recommending to take care of the most pressing problems. Excellent. So the short-term approach, it's really triage to resolve the most urgent street tree issues. And it includes removing the 20 trees identified by the Community Forestry Commission for removal, pruning the 13 trees identified by the CFC to take care of the sidewalk clearance issues and remove the visual obstructions, fixing the enhanced streetscape in the highly compromised areas, so taking care of the decorative brick pavers, replacing the sidewalk panels if needed, and then removing all of the tree grates at this point, especially those that are lifted. There are approximately 56. And then filling the planting area with a low-cost maintenance option, pea gravel, to provide an aesthetic appearance and to reduce weed growth and reduce soil erosion. This would be a temporary situation until it can be identified whether trees should be replanted or the location repurposed, or whether or not tree grates should go back in. There's some disagreements about whether or not, whether or not tree grates is a best management approach. They do cause some issues, and so there isn't consensus whether or not tree grates should actually even be used within an urban environment. So staff estimates, estimates that the cost to complete the short-term approach is approximately $25,000 to $35,000. And this would include tree removal, stump grinding where necessary, minor sidewalk repair, filling the planting area with pea gravel, and then the tree. So the long-term approach would take the next step, and it would be looking at specifically on ways to address the ongoing street tree management issue. Try to find a solution to why the street trees aren't being maintained downtown. Suggested as follow-up to the short-term approach would include community engagement, and the long-term approach would specifically identify property owner and city responsibilities for street care, if any, if there is any city responsibility in the downtown enhanced streetscape area. If the responsibility changes in terms of what the expectations are for the adjacent property owners, it would require amending the city's development code and possibly the Code of Ordinances as well. And then based on established responsibilities for the street, for street tree care, there is a city responsibility involved budgeting funds for downtown street. Be a follow-up item if what, actually budgeting for the street, downtown street tree program. Other considerations for discussion include installing plants for arts in select locations where trees are not replanted, installing streetscape lighting, and other streetscape elements, street furniture, if you will, trash cans and benches in the downtown. And then also following up on recommendations from the Festival Street Project pertaining to street trees, including updating the city's suggested street planting list to remove trees with high allergy potential and to minimize tree care costs. Festival Street consultant recommended they specifically looked at tree varieties and emphasized tree types that don't have a high, create a lot of pollen and allergy issues. Kind of a unique approach. And then establishing a funding mechanism for tree care, that was the recommendation from the Festival Street Project. And then finally requiring engineered soils or enhanced soils when new trees are planted to ensure uncompacted soil is available for tree root growth. So it's really important so that the root stone causes many problems. So discussion items for the council. The first question is, is there a consensus from council on the short-term approach directing staff to move forward with the short-term triage approach? And also, this is an opportunity for council discussion on replacement of the street trees, whether streetscape lighting should happen, whether the idea of installing plants for art is a, is a, something to follow up on, and then also other streetscape elements, benches, trash cans, and the like. Staff's also interested in hearing council's thoughts on maintenance responsibilities. Does city council see a role for the city in maintaining the street trees downtown long-term? And then depending on city council's discussion, is there a consensus to allow staff to work with the CFC to comprise a draft plan for city council consideration and public comment that addresses these issues within the downtown streetscape? So this concludes the formal staff presentation part of the work session. Be happy to answer any questions and open it up for.
Okay, so let's start with questions before we go through the discussion items. Counsel President Rippey?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, thank you, Dan, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. First of all, are you aware of any lawsuits or anything due to the injury?
I have, I'm not aware of any lawsuits that have been filed.
Okay.
If there, if there are any, it would go to Paul.
We've had, had a couple of people call about tripping, and we've referred them back to the property owner whose responsibility it is, so.
So the, the liability for the grates, does that reside with the city or with the property owner?
It's any improvement in the, in those sidewalks or responsibility of the property owner to maintain right now, which is why we've referred the, referred anybody that's called as back to the property, to the business owner.
All right. Second question, do you, what's your opinion about any benefit to keeping the pavers? I understand they were done many years ago, but as we can see, some of them are falling apart. Is the intent to replace the pavers or simply to try and raise them back up to the level that they were at or what?
So at this point, the intent is to level them up, replace them if any need to be replaced, at least at this point, as part of the short-term approach. Certainly whether or not paver should remain downtown is something that can be looked at as part of the longer-term approach, as part of the broader streetscape, what the vision is for the streetscape downtown.
Okay, and lastly, you categorize the part of working on the city code as part of the long-term solution. Is there any reason why that can't be done concurrently with the short-term or get that started sooner? Because I think there's going to be, need to be some changes with regard to the code.
That's a, that's a good question, Counsel Rippey. And I think really the reason it's in the long-term approach is so that we can have a discussion with the adjacent property. Because I don't think all of them understand or know that is the city code requirement that they're supposed to maintain the streetscape. And then, you know, just so that there is opportunity to have good discussion and then specifically lay out what the responsibility should be, whether it's all still on the adjacent property owners or shared responsibility. And then that gets into a discussion about budget and how it gets funded, and so that's a longer-term discussion.
So in general, I would say that I'm in support of the short-term approach, although I do think the policy part of it, the code part of it, can be, can be started relatively quickly, even though, you know, you're going to get input and all that thing. But I wouldn't wait until short-term is done before you even start that aspect of it.
And we can start that.
And then I really would like for you to look at the costs associated with the responsibility of the maintenance changing from the business owner to the city for those properties that are in that designated yellow area, the streetscape. I'm not sure that the owners, you know, I just, I'd just be curious. I'm not sure the owners had a choice to begin with, put those trees in. And if you'd asked them how many want the trees there versus paying for them to be, they'd probably be quite a few trees taken down. So I would not want to see that. I wouldn't want to see this, the trees go away. But they do need, but it does need to be maintained, and I see that there needs to be a plan that has regular maintenance, not waiting 20 years before we realize that something needs to be done. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gustafson?
Sorry, had to take myself off of mute there. Thank you, I agree with Counsel Rippey on, we need to address that short-term approach right away before there's any serious liability that either the city or the business owners need to be involved in. So that should be taken care of as soon as possible. As far as the locations, that the yellow section and kind of the continuity of the downtown, it is, feels very confusing because on one hand, it's, it's probably, you know, in the code says that the property owner is responsible for that area, but at the same time, the property owner, it seems like they have no control over that area. And it's really the same with, with, as homeowners as well, you know? Those trees are put out in front of our house whether we want it or not, and we're still responsible for them. So in that downtown area specifically, I especially sense we're trying to move forward with a kind of a look and feel in the, in the heart of downtown. I would be supportive of changing that responsibility to a city responsibility so that there is some continuity on look, feel, style, and maintenance.
Thank you. Excuse me, Counsel Ewing?
Thanks, thanks for coming this evening and presenting this information. So I do know that a case went forward, and I know this is New York, but regardless, it went forward that once those areas of danger are identified, then it becomes community welfare and safety, and the cities could be liable for it. So I'd like a more detailed look legally at what our liability, since we've now got photos of danger areas, if that liability doesn't come back to bite us. So I do have a concern about that. I totally agree with my other two counselors. I think we need to do the short term, get that moving forward. I would like to see the code, you know, parallel to it so we're not wasting time. As far as the streets lighting, I guess that we need to kind of, as a council, in my opinion, make a decision about a value statement. We want people to come to our downtown area. We want it to feel like Forest Grove. We want it to be representative of Tree City, those types of things. If that's a value for us to have better economics and better downtown, then I really think we need to consider it being a responsibility for, from the city in maintaining, keeping continuity, and keeping our downtown streetscape healthy. That's just kind of my opinion at this point in time. I would like to know with the grates, I know this was a big conversation when they first started going in, and it appears to me that the voices that knew said these grates are going to be a problem, not today, but in the future. I don't know why we have the grates anymore. I don't know why we don't just get rid of them and put something there that really keeps the health of those trees intact. Also, we talked a little bit about the bricks being disruptive and possibly a tripping hazard, and while we've talked about the trees, I don't see a plan on how we're going to address and deal with those bricks kind of slipping. Is there a plan for that? And if not, then we need to come up with one as part of your possible draft that you're going to put before us in the coming, hopefully, months. That's kind of it. If you feel that you can address any of those, I'd really be appreciative.
Thank you, Counselor Ewing. So we don't have a plan for the bricks at this point. We've been just focusing on the, on the urgent issues of trying to resolve the pressing safety issues. Right now, the decorative pavers are part of the downtown streetscape, and so if there is a situation where because of the bricks sinking, if it's a safety issue, then we would need to take care of it and then make it look good, and so replacing the bricks where needed. Whether that's part of a long-term approach, there's certainly room for discussion on that. That could be part of a broader discussion about the streetscape generally downtown and other, other desirable elements that the city council would like to see to improve the downtown area.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for the presentation. You know, I will agree that this is, there are a lot of issues that could present a liability for the city. So we need to take care of that, I would say, first thing. I agree with Counselor Ewing that we need to think about the value. What do we want people to see when they come to our downtown? And the community is not very happy with the recent cutting, cutting of trees. Of course, there was, you know, the emerald ash borer and all that, and those trees are going to be replaced. So I would not like to see trees not being replaced. I think that's, that's what I'm trying to say. I think we need to try to keep that and, you know, do whatever we can to keep our trees, but make it safe, make it safe. And I do think that it has to be a responsibility of the city. I know that costs us money, but you know, we are responsible for that. And, you know, we need to be in charge of the maintenance. That's my thought. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Well, I have a comment.
Okay. Counselor Martinez?
And I agree with most of the statements that have been made so far. I know I have never seen a tree, not saying that there isn't, that doesn't cause destruction to the sidewalks or the scape around there. And if, if this is going to be an ongoing problem, even when we replace the trees, is it really worth it? And what other, and I know our tree experts know, and that we, we just need to come up with some way of preventing the destruction of that and, and the cost for the city or business owners in the future.
So I have two questions. Excuse me. First of all, how does the short-term approach align with the forestry's work plan and our master plan? And then also, as far as like our urban canopy, I understand that you don't want to. I understand that you don't want to have maintenance, but I also understand that part of the charm of our downtown and what's good for our environment is to have those trees. And so I'm just wondering if the commission had a chance, like what I didn't see in this presentation and hopefully in the long-term plan we come up with, is also that layered approach of how we're meeting the climate needs, our urban canopy, and, you know, aligning with our master plan?
So thank you, Mayor Wenzel. I appreciate that comment because one thing, it's kind of foreshadowing an upcoming work session, I think on July 8th. We're going to be bringing forward information about the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities work that needs to be done and code amendments. And downtown Forest Grove is designated as a town center in the Metro Region 2040 Plan. And by virtue of being a town center, it's considered to be a pedestrian-oriented, climate-friendly area. And the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules has, they have, there are requirements for maintaining tree canopy within climate-friendly areas. And that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be street trees or other ways that maybe you can reach those canopy goals by working with private property owners to plant trees downtown and so forth. It doesn't have to be within the public right of way, but there are some goals around that. So that's something that definitely needs to be taken care of. In terms of the Urban Forest Management Plan, and Bruce is really the lead author on the Urban Forest Management Plan, but there are recommendations in there about dealing with tree hazards in particular. And so this is something that aligns well with the Urban Forest Management.
Okay, thank you. What do you think, Counselor?
I'm on board with most of what everybody's saying. We also have to look at not only the bottom halves of the trees, but the top halves. I sent Jesse a picture the other day. The tree in front of my restaurant snapped in half, took off my gutter, and it was a very light wind. It wasn't much wind. So it's not necessarily, I don't feel like we don't need trees. I feel like we need the right trees. Something that isn't going to be, is grow up as high, have the root that goes like that. So I think that's the biggest thing is finding the right trees for downtown.
And there is information about tree variety and what the minimum required tree planting space is. Maybe going with a shorter statured tree rather than a larger tree. I know that the maple trees in particular are our favorite because of the fall color and so forth. And I think, and Mark was here when a lot of that work was being done, and I think maples were emphasized. But maybe now, moving forward, knowing what we now know, maybe looking at other varieties that are lower maintenance and are well-suited for the planting space that we have.
One other, sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
One more question. In other places, I have seen large cement planters that are placed. Instead of planting them in the ground, you use these large planters. I'd hope you would consider that as well. That might solve some of the issues. Thank you.
The commission's meeting, the last.
Yeah, which I had another, I remembered I had a question during the presentation. You didn't have the red marks on there of locations where you didn't think replanting should occur, but like guestimate-wise, how many of those trees did you think should not be replanted? Just a handful? Not a? I heard Justin. Okay. Well, one of the things I was wondering, so for me personally, I heard consensus, and I'll just double-check about the short-term approach approval from the council on that. With the other items, me personally, one of, an idea I have is I think these are a lot of like really meaty topics. And I think that it will, you know, we just became, the city club just became affiliated Main Street, right, program? And then you have the Forestry Commission, you have downtown businesses. So we had made some adjustments to our boards and commission to give capacity for like task force, right? Like, so, and I think that this is a perfect opportunity to start to have one on the street tree in downtown. Because I think, and you know, we had right now, my understanding from Jesse is that on the Senate side, they approved some congressional funding for the Festival Street. That still isn't a final deal, but if we're going to start working on the Festival Street, they all just really overlap, and I don't want to have like one approach steering this. And so I think having, inviting a member of CCE, some forestry, Main Street program, downtown business owners, to look at this and work on it is the best approach. Because I don't feel like, honestly, at this point in the game, that these are the questions that rich discussion, right? Is going to come up with those policy and those driving about maintenance responsibility, what are we going to do in the downtown? And we can discuss it now and maybe give some direction for the task force, but I wouldn't feel confident. I think there's a lot of work that needs to take place for the long-term approach. It's basically what I'm saying. Anyone else on council want to weigh in? Oh.
So Mayor, in response to your last comment, I think that you have a lot of good points. And I think what we're looking for is to sort of, at this point, if council could give us, give staff the sort of leeway to come up with the sort of, just a very draft conceptual plan for what we might do with the trees and other things like we talked about before, like streetscape lighting, plinths, benches, those sorts of things. And then kind of have a conceptual plan to take out to the community, like business owners, CFC members, those sorts of people in the community. We think that we might get a lot more traction that way than kind of starting from scratch with everybody on the committee. But of course, that's the council's direction, or the council's direction. But that's kind of what we were looking for tonight, was to see if council was comfortable with staff beginning that study and kind of working through that.
Okay, so to recap, the discussion item on is whether council is comfortable with staff coming up with a draft form, a framework, out, dealing with some of these items, and then bringing them back. So how does council feel about that? Are we, I'm looking online, thumbs up, thumbs up?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, there's, Counselor Ewing? You're on mute, Counselor. Counselor, you're on mute.
Thanks. So when we're saying that, are we also directing staff to begin or the short-term approach? And then staff to go forward with doing a draft plan? Because I really want us to kind of step into the short-term, which is more because it's critical, and work in conjunction or parallel with a draft plan? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that there's consensus for staff to carry out the short-term approach while working on a draft plan for these other items.
Okay, that's good with me. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any further discussion from council? Questions? Yes, Ms. Riordan?
I'll mention one thing. It's the comments, I think it was Counselor Valenzuela mentioned about the Emerald Ash Borer and replanting. And just for the record, we've been working with the Oregon Department of Agriculture and the Oregon Department of Forestry on the removal of the ash trees. And both the Oregon Department of Agriculture and the Department of Forestry are looking and trying to find secure funds for replanting, but they haven't found funds yet. So I just don't want, just want the expectations clear.
I'm bringing those expectations. Got it. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further hands, I'm going to close this work session at 6:08. Thank you, gentlemen. So this work session of the city council, the topic is city charter process and ballot. Just another friendly reminder that there will be no public comment will be taken, and the council will take no formal action. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Downey.
Okay, we can bring up the screen share. Some of this first part will be review and a recap, and most of it's a review and a recap. So for the next slide, purpose review referendum and ballot process and final review of ballot and charter language. You've held three work sessions on this topic since the Charter Review Committee turned it back over to you. And you requested a work session on the ballot process, which is tonight and the last opportunity to comment on ballot statement and charter changes prior to our July 8th meeting, when staff will bring back a resolution for council consideration to refer the charter to the voters. The referendum ballot process here is July 8th, 2024. Again, we're going to ask council to approve of referring the charter to the voters and through the ballot title, summary explanatory measures. This is your last opportunity to make changes prior to the August 16th filing deadline, since your next meeting, your meeting in August is, I believe, is the 28th. And again, August 16th is the deadline to file the referral text and or per ballot title in order to complete the challenge period. And September 5th, deadline for filing to Washington County of a measuring election and explanatory statement. The county will then assign a ballot measure number. September 9th is deadlines to file measurement arguments for the voters' pamphlets. And November 5th is the election. And we do not pay for ballot measure contests, and there's no limit to the number of ballot measures that can be referred in a given election. Outreach process, elected officials may, as, once the council approves the measure, elected officials may advocate for the measure at any time. Once you pass the resolution, no public employee work time may be used to distribute any material that advocates the political position on the measure. Staff can give informational only. And the city has a website page regarding the charter. If the resolution passes, it will be updated.
Paul, excuse me. Could you go back?
Yes.
Well, before we move forward, I need a clarification. Will that instruction also be given to boards and commissions? Because there is a question about what rules need to be applied to boards and commissions if they're used to engage in this?
We can pass that information along to the boards and commissions. And we typically do that when the city's going to put a ballot measure on. We remind the boards and commissions, members, that they are public officials. They are not elected officials, so they cannot advocate for a ballot measure once the, as a member of the committee. They can do it on their personal time as long as they're not representing the committee in any form or fashion. Okay, and we'll update the website regarding, include educational materials regarding the specific ballot title and changes, explanatory statement, a question and answer regarding each proposed change. And we'll put a scrolling web banner highlighting the issue so residents can find it faster on the website. And we'll also, with our, use our communications staff to do social media posts on Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, highlighting the issue from an informational standpoint. Okay, the charter changes recap. The council charged the committee to review for specific issues, geographic representation, i.e. district awards. And there was no change recommended there. Term limits for the mayor and city council members, recommended no change. Role of the mayor and council president. The role of the mayor changed to word as, instead of the political head of the city government, to the mayor serves as the primary representative of the council for the city. And for the council president, the main change was not being able to serve more two consecutive years. It's eligible to serve again after a one-year break in service. City manager residency, a change, a change so it says the city manager need not reside in the city. And ordinance resolutions and orders, the change there is make them available in writing for public prior to adoption, filling vacancies, allowing the city councilors to fill vacant positions even if the number of remaining councilors falls below the city's charter's quorum and voting requirements. This way, the remaining city councilors can appoint new members, and it won't fall under the county commission to appoint new members to get the council back up to a quorum. And then also limited a council's term length only to the next general election rather than the remaining term of the vacating counselor. Reasons for vacancies, there are change to add conviction of a misdemeanor or felony crime. And you agreed on a consensus to have one ballot measure. The next steps, comment on ballot process and outreach, and comment on charter changes, resolution with ballot title, summary and explanatory statements. There, I know they're on an additional, I think they're on additional attachment, so. This concludes this PowerPoint, I believe. Is it the next slide? Yeah, this concludes the staff presentation. If you wanted us to bring up the resolution with ballot title, summary and explanatory statement, we can. If you want to discuss anything on here before you go there, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think we should have a discussion on this portion of the presentation. Make sure there's no clarifying questions. And then we'll move on. Are there questions? Any discussion? Counselor Ewing?
You're on mute.
You're on mute again.
I believe it's in the next document that we were sent, but I want to bring it to the attention because I'm not comfortable. Again, there's the terminology of disabled being used when talking about a counselor vacancy spot. I would prefer we get away from the term disabled because again, that is a different term for different people. I find it kind of insensitive. I would prefer language that said unavailable or something along that line. Will we be seeing that additional information?
Can you tell us which section you're speaking of so we can look at that, Counselor? What slide are you on?
I'm not, no, it's not in this presentation.
We haven't brought up the charter language present.
Okay, okay, that's what I.
We haven't brought that up.
Thank you.
Mayor, you want to talk about anything in this particular presentation?
Counselor Gustafson, did you have your hand raised? And no? Okay, I think, you know, just for discussion purposes, I think with our proposed changes, I'm just still concerned about the change in definition to mayor. And I'm going to say it again on public record. And I also, you know, I've been speaking to other mayors in Washington County. And I almost think too, with, I think there's good intention with the role of the council president being every two years and then not letting someone serve. But then the reality is, is that really like to put that in our charter really limits what people can do. And people come to council and they have different time allowances. You know, I can remember after my first term as a counselor, I went to a few different counselors, I'm not going to bring up all of their names, saying, hey, you know, I think we should switch up our council president. And no one wanted to do it. Right? Like, I think myself and then the person who was doing it at the time, TJ, Counsel Johnson, who had been doing it for 12 to 16 years, were the only two who wanted to do it. So I guess I'm just always afraid of really narrowing a scope in a charter, which is the constitution, which is the constitution for the city, which is supposed to give frameworks and boundaries. But, you know, again, I would say that with the council president, much like the mayor, right? Well, the council president is decided by the council. So if you are, if we, whoever the council is at that time is done with that person, then I would assume they would not vote or nominate that person to be on. So I just think that we're getting, you know, in the role of the mayor, I just do think the mayor, whoever's elected, whether it's whoever, is the person elected by the citizens in Forest Grove to be the political head. And I would hate to see the role that Forest Grove has, like us diminishing our own mayor in our charter, that role. But so those are my comments on that. Is there any, I mean, I would like, I guess I can't make an amendment to change the council president, but those are some comments I've heard, is that other, I've even like changed my position on term limits because I used to be all for term limits. But what I'm hearing throughout Washington County is when you limit things and you're having a hard time with succession or community engagement, then you're getting, right, it's creating some, there's always like a catch, right? Not, I mean, that's, policy is messy. Counselor Ewing?
So regarding council president, I think that the discussion was clear in that we want our council president to be able to be cross-trained. We don't want just one person time after time after time. And you know this from experience that it doesn't allow other people to grow if all you do is reelect. And while yes, I understand that people don't always And while yes, I understand that, uh, people don't always want to step up to it. But I think that as long as we have that in there, more people will be willing to step up to that role. Knowing that A, it is a shorter term period, but also more importantly, that, um, we are cross-training the whole council to be able to step into that important role when needed. So, um, I'm happy with the language as it is. We probably will never agree on, uh, the mayor position, uh, change. But again, in this day and age, I find that having a political leader, uh, really is going against what I'm hearing from the community. The role hasn't changed. And it's not a referendum, and I know that this is hard. It's not a referendum on, um, you, Melinda. It isn't. This is a referendum on the future at looking at different things. And I know it probably maybe feels that way because we've been very ardent about this conversation, but really, I, I feel terrible if that's how you feel. This is about making a change that is constantly put before us now politically. Once you say that somebody is a political leader, there are people that are going to reset that that come forward and show it in many different ways. So while we may not agree with it, I'm happy with the language that, um, we've all agreed upon for many times now. Thank you.
Counselor Gusterson. You're on mute as well.
Um, I'm using a new headset today, so I'm still trying to get used to it. Um, the role of council president. Um, if, if there is a concern that after the council president has served their president term that nobody else wants that position, can there be an exception in here? So that we're not kind of stuck with no council president because nobody wants to take on that.
You would have to write the ability to have the exception into the charter language. The charter as proposed would not allow the council president.
So that's.
To serve more than two years.
So that's my question is instead of doing the, the role of the council president in the charter, which is very I mean, it's our, it's our document, right? Maybe we can do it in our council rules. So that's why I wanted to ask staff, could we say in our council rules that we would like to see cross-training succession, we would like council presidents? Because then is it easier for us to make an exception or an amendment? Um, then, I mean, that's, that was my question is I just think that that idea of succession and cross-training and like how long we should do it should be in our rules.
I see Jesse is heading for the council rules, but probably the answer is yes, you could put, you could take it out of the charter and you could put it in as a council rule that the council president could not serve any more than two consecutive terms unless the council makes an exception at the end of those two years.
Yeah, I think it backs us into a hole. And I also think that the one thing that the community member and the livability survey and all the, I mean, like, when, when we talk about what we hear from the community members is community members want term limits. So it's, it's ironic to me that we are saying, hey, no, we're not going to term limit ourselves, but then we're going to term limit this position. It's like, hey, you know, we're going to tell the community like, hey, we didn't add term limits on this ballot. We're not going to put it in our charter, but we're going to do this other term limit. I just, I mean, if we're saying like to me, it's a policy and a philosophy question. If we're saying we're not doing term limits because we don't have enough community engagement and we really just want to keep making sure we have people fill that role, then that same argument has to be true for that council president. And I think the council president, you know, we have another work session later about council compensation, right? And there was, one of the options is to pay the council president more. So that means like, hey, well, this person, I would assume the idea behind the budget committee members was that the person does a little bit more work than another councillor, right? So there's just, I mean, I think we're doing things to try to increase. But I just don't think you should also force someone on our commissions. We tried to do this with the chair. We tried to say you can't be the chair for more than two years and people just really don't like being told. And some people like to volunteer and do not want to be in a leadership role. I don't know. I would rather see it in the council rules. I guess that's what I, but I'm not hearing any.
I, I wanted to just make sure that we're not backing ourselves into a corner. You know, have a, an alternative. And if this backs us into a corner, I think we should think about.
Jesse, did you find any answers on that?
So what the charter currently says is that at the first meeting of each year, the council must elect a president from its membership. It doesn't talk anything about terms or lengths or anything like that. Uh, the council, it's up to the council. If you want to put something like that in the council rules, you can. You want to put it in the charter, you can. Um, but it can go in either, in either location. I think Paul already mentioned, if you do put it in the charter, it's more ironclad than if you put it in the rules. If you put it in the rules, the council has a bit more discretion about what they may or may not want to do. It takes a vote of the council. That's the difference between the charter and, and the council rules.
Counselor Ewing.
So, um, I think that, uh, it has been well articulated and I don't want to back this into a corner either. And I'm, I guess that what I fear is that all of that work, all of our discussions will be diluted down into council rules. And during my time on the council, the council rules have really meant very little. Uh, they were a great little pretend document, but they were not followed. So, um, if there is an assurance that this would be something that we actually will fulfill, um, I am okay with putting it into the council rules and not locking us in, in the charter.
So it's a, it's a work, I guess we just need consensus. Is there a consensus from this group? I see yes from Counselor Guston, Valenzuela, Counselor Ewing, say yes.
Consensus for what?
To switch the count, to take, to remove the council president term length from the charter. With an understanding that we're going to address it in council rules.
I guess, uh, I don't, I don't see, I thi- I think the, the argument, the logic that, um, we're not, we're not, uh, recommending term limits for elected officials is the same as, uh, setting term limits for those that are appointed and boards and commissions and term limits for council president. Those, those are two different distinct, uh, types of term limits. One is, one is for elected officials that, that are determined by the voters. The other is determined, uh, by the council for its own administrative purposes and the purpose of um, as Counselor Ewing has said, the, um, succession planning and education and experience, uh, for other members of the council. So um, I, I'm, I'm fine with the language as it is. I don't, I don't see the, uh, I don't, I don't think the logic holds to make the difference.
Okay, so I had, so I had a yes from Counselor Guston, Valenzuela, Ewing, Martinez, and then Marshall Wood. And I have a yes for Marshall. So the consensus is to remove the council president limits from the, the charter update.
Okay, we will bring back the information on July eighth with a change.
Yeah, to follow up on what Counselor Ewing said, right now I've already talked to Jesse for our scheduling purposes. Like, one of the things that you know, a new mayor might come in and do it differently, but that I've told him is that at the very first meeting after people are sworn in and elected that I want a work session on council rules because I feel like what you were saying, I want to tell, I want to make sure you know that I heard you, Counselor Ewing, and I've been here and seen it. Like, that way people can that, that council that's elected chooses their rules, their agreements, their understanding and how they're moving forward. And everyone knows the rules, right? Like, so that, that's something that's, um, already on the agenda. So if you want that before that, I, I don't know how far out we are on the calendar with the work session, but I agree that there has to be, the council rules have to be decided by the council that's been elected and everyone has to be aware of them. So. Okay, do you want to move? Are we good to move on? Are there any further discussion points on this part of it? Okay, let's move on to the process, please. Do you want the resolution or the?
I don't know what Paul wants.
Counselor Ewing has a specific comment. If we could go to that, if we if we can find, where was your reference, Counselor Ewing, to the specific, from the disability reference that you wanted to talk about so we can or that language, make sure we get that covered, talked about? I see.
You're on, uh, mute, Counselor. Elena, you're, oh, sorry, Counselor Ewing, you're on mute.
My day, what can I say? Uh, I don't have the document there. Thank you. Thank you. That is the term that I'm, um, having issue with. Uh, I don't think disability is the proper term. I think that disability connotes in people's minds, somebody who has an actual physical or, uh, mental or whatever disability. I don't like the term. So I would prefer us to use a more accurate term, something like if a councillor is unavailable or something like that, I just find that the term disabled, um, is offensive to me. Thank you. Thanks, Paul, for finding it.
It was Mariah, I think.
Mariah found it, so.
Oh, thank you, Mariah.
There's slightly different wording later, I can show. Let's see what the slightly different is temporarily disabled from acting as mayor. So what is used with Family Medical Leave Act? When, you know, I think, can we use language that's I think there has to be some sort of language used during, oh, sorry, Counselor Guston.
Wouldn't it just be considered absent? I mean, if, if you're absent for, for really any reason, you know, a long-term absence, whether it's, uh, FMLA, uh, bereavement from an injury, an illness, it's just an absence from council for, um, an extended period of prime. I mean, this, this talks about it doesn't even, it doesn't even say how long, right? But, you know, there's, there are times that one of us can't attend a, a meeting due to our vacation or an illness or, you know, disability. It could be any reason. Um, this is really vague.
Yeah, I think this.
Disability kind of shoehorns it into one thing when it really should be absence and it should be a long-term absence, right? It shouldn't be just.
Yeah, I think this is like for, and I think staff should probably correct me, but this is if something like, I want to say something has happened, um, or like a medical leave or and you're going to be gone for an extended amount of time and then you're like, so then we can fill out, fill that vacancy. Um, I don't know, because.
I understand, I do understand what the concept is. What I'm saying is as a disabled person, I feel we're using the wrong term. I agree with Donna, an extended absence is perhaps a better way because then it can encompass so much more. So it is the term itself that I, um, have difficulty with. It connotes something totally different when you use the term disabled versus if you use extended leave of absence. Thank you.
I want to be Goldilocks because I think it's somewhere in the middle. Cause I don't want to just say absence because then can a councillor say like, hey, I'm going to go to my summer or my winter house in this other location for six months and then you guys can just, you know, according to your charter, I have an extended absence, just fill my spot for this long. Like, I think it should align with FMLA. Likes, but I understand what you're saying too, Counselor Ewing, with the language, but the absence has to be for a reason where that something has prevented, a medical reason, someone has prevented. Yeah, in FMLA it says disability leave, um.
So.
Yeah. But it's also, oh, I am so sorry.
I'm going to go counsel president, Rippey, and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Valenzuela.
I, I'm just, I'm sorry, but I got on my phone, I went to the thesaurus and looked for other words. Uh, one other word that may work for us is incapacitation. I think that's what we're trying to describe here. Incapacitation for any reason, whether it's an illness, whether it's any number of other things, they're incapacitated. They cannot fill the capacity of the council or, or the role. So, uh, that might be a, uh, an acceptable alternative term.
Is it something that staff can look at and then come back at the July eighth meeting?
Yeah, we'll walk, we'll work with the city attorney.
Wait, sorry, I totally forgot. Counselor Valenzuela and then Counselor Guston. I'm sorry, Counselor Valenzuela.
Okay, thank you so much. No, I agree, the word disability should, uh, needs to, to be changed. Um, I was recently on, on, on family leave and that could be for many reasons. You know, uh, you need to be taking care of a, of a Neil, uh, relative or something like that. And this word just kind of, uh, it's too narrow. It's too narrow. We need to make it a little bit broader, uh, like Counselor Ewing was suggesting.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gusterson.
We also need to add some sort of, of breadth of timeline because if, you know, I don't want to, somebody is incapacitated for during one meeting, you know, we don't, we don't want anyone else saying, well, we need to to have somebody else fill them in or six months and where, where, where's the line? Where is the line working out?
I think someplace else in the charter, it says if a councillor, oh, Jesse's going to tell you. Um, go ahead.
Okay.
So currently in the charter under section thirty-one, if you look at section thirty-one B two, it does talk about absence from the city for thirty days or from all council meetings within a forty-five day period without council consent. So there is and if the council does consent to it, then it can be longer. But if the council doesn't consent, then those are the time periods that have been put in place. Now that would declare the position vacant. So that's a little bit, um, in this particular one, I think this is, um, uh, not necessarily declaring it vacant, but saying uh, somebody else could be appointed pending the determination of vacancy. So I hope that helps.
Okay, any other, so do you want to go over, we addressed Counselor Ewing's, were, were you going to go over something about this part of it?
We can get with Ashley and work on, if, if the council doesn't like the term, the disabled and work on alternate language. Consider putting in there, I, each word's going to have a different, a different meaning, so we'll, we'll or we can work with Ashley on proposed language. Want to change it. Remember, this is for the, this is a filling of vacancies, so it's.
Right.
So this is a, you know, it's, D looks like it is, it is designed to be if a councillor is unable to attend the meetings for a while, but you don't want to declare the position vacant. You can appoint a lack of better, a pro temp councillor in the interim. So it's not a true vacancy if you read thirty-two D. It's, it's if the councillor says, I need, I have four or five months worth of surgery. I know you need to continue business. Can you and you might want to consider appointing a pro temp councillor for that period until I can return. I think that's what thirty-two D's kind of somewhat designed for is a, not a short-term absence, but a longer-term absence where the, that the councillor may be able to come where they need a break, but they can come back and serve and finish out there and, and come back and serve as a councillor at a later date.
We, we just want to make sure that it's not inconsistent with section thirty-one.
Yeah.
Counselor, oh wait, no, never mind.
Cause you still have to approve a longer absence as part of thirty-one, thirty-one B two.
So I guess my, oh, Counselor Ewing's hand is raised. You're like playing games with me, Counselor. I'm like.
Not, not trying. I'm just having a really super, super long day. Not trying to cause any issue here. Um, I'm happy with staff going away and coming back with, uh, better term. That was my main issue is the terminology, but also I do agree that I think that when you're talking long-term, um, as, um, Donna mentioned, when you're talking long-term, I do believe that we have language that reflects what that means. Um, so I really kind of like the term incapacitated or something along that line. Um, but I think that we're, and I appreciate that we're all kind of looking at it more sensitively about the term itself, not. about the term itself, not that we don't put rules around it, but the term itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I guess my question for staff is just when, you know, this process of putting it on the ballot and then educating, it, how are we, what's the message? Like, I thought I was going to see it in this presentation, so I didn't ask it in the last one.
We can go back, there's a, there's a third presentation, there's a third thing, the resolution, that's kind of got the explanatory statement and that in it, so. If you can go, the proposed explanatory statement.
Yeah, I just, okay.
This, the resolution, if you look at the resolution itself here.
It also has the ballot title and the summary.
Yeah, they're going, yeah, going down and keep going down to the, down, keep going a little farther.
Just maybe a little more background about that. As you say, just maybe a little more background, that's what would actually appear in the voter's pamphlet. And so any educational effort that staff would do on the website or social media would really key off of that.
Okay, that was my question is that, because it just seems, I mean, even for me, that there's like a lot of cleanup, like language that we're doing and some smaller things, so there's like six things that were being addressed. I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, that's the question and then there's the summary of it and then then there's explanatory statement which gets into more of the detail of this, of the changes in the up that are up in the summary.
And just a little bit of background about the summary and the explanatory statement and the ballot title, those are all word limited. And so in Ashley's proposed language here, it's, it's, it's not plus because you have to be at least at or minus, but it's within three to five words on each one. And so if we add something, we need to take something out.
Yeah, the question's typically 10 words, a limit. The summary, if I remember correctly, is 175 words. And the explanatory statement, I believe, is 500 words. From all the ballot measures we've written in the past, that's, that's always been the limits on those.
Okay, cool. Are there any other discussion items or questions for staff? Okay, staff, Paul, you have what you need from us?
Yes.
Cool.
Remove the term limits for the council president from the charter and work on language for the section 32D of coming up with better language to replace disability.
Okay, sounds good. I'm going to adjourn this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. We will reconvene for our city council meeting in 17 minutes. Thank you. Hey, Mariah, do you think I can see the Zoom to see if everyone's on there? Please, sorry for not using manners.
All right, everybody's there.
Okay. So, hang on, let me read my little work session script. I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. No public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. Tonight's work section, work session topic is on council compensation. And I'm going to turn it over to Paul Downey, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director.
Good evening. With us tonight is David Anderson, the Chair of the Budget Committee. He was also the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee on Compensation. I'm going to go through some general cities, some general slides, and then he's going to, we're going to bring up the presentation that he wants, that he's going to do about the committee and what they meant, what they talked about and their recommendation and their reasons for it, so. We'll get started unless, and so background, you, again, you, council compensation, refer to the non-elected members of the budget committee by the full budget committee for further analysis. We, they held an additional budget committee meeting, discussed council compensation on May 22nd and also did an additional meeting on June 4th. They did two meetings.
Can you pause one minute? Counselor Valenzuela, I see your hand. Can you not see the screen or what's going on?
Are we muted? We might be muted, hang on.
Jesse.
Okay, we're.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Valenzuela for first.
Right here now?
Letting us know that we were muted.
All right.
We are now ready to move on unmuted. So see, everybody so far has been muted tonight. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, we talked about that slide and, okay, the committee reviewed in detail an updated spreadsheet that listed counselor compensation and mayor compensation. When I say counselor compensation, I asked me counselor and mayor on that. Counselors and mayor for 17 area cities of larger and smaller size. We discuss options for counselor compensation. And the committee discussed how to comply with Oregon revised statutes regarding how and when compensation for elected officials can be changed. Purposes of tonight's work sessions review the county's recommendation to discuss counselor compensation. Work session is divided into two parts, counselor compensation and then two implementation. Part one, counselor compensation. Current compensation's up there. The mayor receives $3,344 per year. Counselor receives $2,496. Mayor and councilors can elect up to family health coverage and pay 5% of the premium, so the city pays the other 95%. Cost of the health insurance varies between counselors depending on the coverage they elect. There's no opt-out to provision to obtain a cash equivalent of the cost of the policy, even if the city elected an opt-out provision. Our contract with CIS limits, limits the amount you can pay an individual to $100 per month. And so, so total compensation, total expenditure between health insurance and the stipends is about $146,000 per year. You see the bulk of that's for the health insurance. That's based on current coverages. But based on the comparison of 17 neighboring cities, small and larger size, 10 have a larger stipend for the mayor than the counselors. Two cities have the same stipend for the mayor and the counselors. Five cities had no stipend for either the mayor or the counselors. Those cities had a larger compensation, a larger stipend for the mayor, the range was, paid to the mayor was buried between 1.3, 1 and 1.35 times to 10, 10 times. Some of that has to do with the fact that, for example, Beaverton has a full-time mayor, so it's, that's why, you know, that's reason for that 10x on the compensation. Okay, other things, consider 11 cities did not pay a larger stipend for the council president than for other counselors. Two cities paid a larger stipend for the council president than the other counselors. Five cities did not pay a stipend at all to anybody. 13 cities do not pay for health insurance for either the mayor or the counselors. Four cities pay for some health insurance of these. One is for the mayor only. One is full family for the mayor and employee only for counselors. And two are the same, the mayor and the counselor has to have the same coverage. Committee discussed various options, including leaving the health insurance the same and increasing stipends by the CPI. Leave health insurance the same and increase stipends by more than the CPI. Discontinue health insurance, insurance and allocate all or a portion of the cost savings to stipends. Or limit health insurance to the individual and allocate all or a portion of the cost savings to stipends. Additional insured would be at the member's expense. Briefly covering those examples. Example one, status quo would increase by stipend by CPI. Health insurance remained the same. The mayor's stipend would increase by about $150 per year. And the counselor's stipend would increase by about, about $100 per year. That increases the total budget by $750, about $146,750 per year. Example two, discontinue health insurance and apply 100% of the existing budget to the stipend based on the existing stipend ratio for health for mayor and counselors. So again, the health insurance is discontinued. The mayor's stipend would go to $28,000 per year. Counselor's stipend would increase to $18,700 per year. The budget would remain the same at $146,000 per year. And these are just examples that they use to discuss. So going on to the next example, discontinue health insurance and apply half of the existing budget to the stipend based on the existing stipend ratio for the mayors and counselors. Health insurance is discontinued. The mayor's stipend would increase to 13,800 per year. Counselor's stipend would increase to 9,200 per year. The budget would, overall budget would decrease to $73,000 per year. Example four, provide mayor and counselors with employee-only health insurance. Coverage and apply the remaining budget to stipends using existing stipend ratio for the mayor and the counselors. So health insurance would increase to employee only at the 95% the city pay. So the mayor and the counselor pay 5%. Anything above employee only would be paid by the, would be paid in full by the mayor or the counselor. Mayor's stipend would increase to $14,250 per year. Counselor's stipend would increase to 9,500 per year. And the budget would remain at $146,000 per year. This point in time, we're going to bring up, we're going to bring up Dave Anderson's presentation that he made, that he put together to talk about the reasons, talk about what they did and their reasons for what their, what their recommendation is and then the reasons for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I think we can go through this first foil pretty quickly because Paul already covered the process that we went through. The only thing I would add is that we did invite each of our elected officials to submit input to the subcommittee. We appreciate that we received it carefully studied and reviewed and compiled along with the information on comparison, the comparison matrix that Paul. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So let's kind of focus on our rationale for wanting to make some changes. It was a very interesting and deliberative process that took quite a bit of discussion. The consensus emerged, though, that the current system didn't seem to meet the needs of the city as we understood them as well as we wished they would. And particularly, we noted that a very heavy weight on health insurance is very viable to some people and much less to others. Those who are self-employed or who are not receiving health insurance through employment or other means receive a great deal of benefit from the health insurance, but if you have health insurance, either through Medicare or your employment or whatever, this may not be as attractive. The other thing we noted was that the dollar equivalent of the health benefit being provided was not necessarily proportional at all to the duties and responsibilities of the person involved. In fact, it was up to the individual elected official to decide whether to cover their entire family or just themselves or themselves and a spouse. And so that had a very, very large difference on the dollar cost of the benefit, but had, it was entirely something that the elected official could decide on their own. And this creates what we felt was insufficient transparency. Citizens wouldn't know necessarily how much dollar value of compensation is going to any elected official unless they understood exactly what the health benefits were, how many people were covered, what that cost. And that's usually not the kind of information that we make available to the public. So we, after quite a bit of discussion, we felt that some changes would be in order and then we recommended these changes as shown on the next foil. So we, we thought that it would be good to change the subsidized health insurance to be elected official only with the option to purchase for family members. That we would also create three tiers of stipends. And that we would use the savings from not providing as much health insurance benefit to significantly increase the stipends. One of our rationales for increasing the stipends significantly was that we wanted serving our city in this manner to be recognized as a significant commitment that took, you know, a lot of time and effort. And we wanted to be something that was viable for more people to consider doing. And so that led us to believe that a significantly larger stipend would probably increase the pool of people who might consider running for office. So our recommendations were that we offer a $12,000 per year stipend to the mayor, nine and a half K for council president and eight K for the rest of the council members. That we would not change the other benefits that you currently receive. There was quite a bit of discussion about how to implement and when to implement. It's quite complicated. Our, our recommendation was that this take effect in January of next year, giving everyone time to prepare for this change. And we recognize that the mechanics of how to improve, approve a compensation increase for people who are currently serving is fraught with areas to get things wrong. And so we felt that was not our expertise and we didn't want to weigh in with any suggestions of exactly how the council would do that. But we would suggest that you rely on the staff, council, on if you decide to adjust the compensation to do it with their guidance on how and when and through what manner of resolutions. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for David or staff? Counsel Ewing.
Hi, David. Thank you for coming this evening. So my one primary question right now is, were any other options considered? Say, for instance, an expense account or a reimbursement account? And the reason I ask that is that, to me, when you put a flat salary out there, it does not provide a transparency for what that salary is compensating the individual for. It doesn't really reflect to me transparency on how those tax dollars are being used. So let me, before I get too detailed, was there any other consideration other than just to increase the stipend?
Absolutely. There was a lot of discussion held about possibly using different expense reimbursement mechanisms and things like that. The, the general view was that committee members felt that significant expenses that a council, that an elected official would incur as part of their official duties should be known a priori and approved by the council a priori so that there's, again, transparency in what's going on. So if you're going to be going off for travel or training or other things that may incur a significant expense, we would assume that that would be something that would be discussed and approved at a council level and reimbursed accordingly. So the stipends that we're suggesting would be to cover the smaller issues that don't make it to the level of having to go through a council approval process. And as I mentioned, to try and make this a viable option for a larger pool of people to consider serving the city in this way.
I would have appreciated, and perhaps as we go forward with this, I would have appreciated some information and comment on the discussion for the expense account option, other than just upping the stipend portion. Could we provide that in our next work session? Because I'd like to kind of understand both sides of it, as well as, to me, this is a huge, huge, huge increase. And our charter does not require us to go before the people for this type of compensation. And I have real concerns about rolling this out to the community without having had full discussions of other options that are available other than just a stipend. Is that something we could have in our future work session?
I don't know that there's a lot of additional detailed information that can be supplied about the specifics of the discussion. It was a free-flowing discussion lasting for hours and detailed minutes of every point were not being kept. I will tell you that there was discussion about, you know, how much should be expensed versus stipend, but generally the feeling was that significant expense items should be carefully considered and approved by the council.
To interrupt, like, do any other, let's ask staff, do any other municipalities offer this option that Counsel Ewing's saying, instead of a stipend, doing an expense account? Did you see that in your comparables?
It didn't appear to in the, in the schedule that we had. I mean, some of them had education, I mean, had travel, like for conferences, like for LOC and NLCs, you know, similar to what we have.
Yeah. Counselor Guffston.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with going to council to.
going to council to, to get those reimbursements approved ahead of time, obviously. But I'm just wondering too, and I agree with Counselor Ewing, this is, this is a very big jump. And I'm not comfortable with it. Not that I don't think that, that elective, elected officials worked hard enough for this jump, right? The time that we spent. It's, it's definitely appropriate. This big of a jump all at once is, is where I'm concerned. I'm just wondering, have we thought through a, a rolling increase? So an increase of a certain percentage each year until we hit the final goal for this raise.
So are we going to move, I just want to, are we moving on to discussion right now about like what we're hearing?
We have some more.
Do we have more presentations?
So we're going to go back to the city. I believe this was Dave's last slide, so we'll go back to the city's, the city's presentation. Next slide and go to the next slide because we've already discussed that. Part two would be implementation. This would be depend, this is for any increase, even if you wanted to increase it by your CPI increase. This is the process you'd have to go through. We can't, we probably didn't increase the CPI correctly last year. So we'd have to go through this process, even if you just did a CPI increase.
But even with our current policy where we do the increase yearly and it comes before?
Your policy says you'll increase it by CPI, but you have to go to the council and pass a resolution. But we didn't probably pass the resolution correctly last year. So we'd have to go through these steps to pass the resolution even for the, even if you gave yourself the four percent CPI that the non-rep got. So to avoid conflict of interest and abuse of office issues when the council is voting, the committee discussed the following two options. Have the increases go into effect at the end of each term. In this case, all counselors can vote after declaring a potential conflict of interest. However, there would be differential benefits for, for a two-year period. For example, the people that start office January first, twenty twenty-five could get different benefits than those that started January twenty, January first of twenty twenty-seven. Because they would be waiting till the end of the current terms for each counselor. Or two, the option two is have the increase going to affect for all counselors at the same time. In this case, the council passes successive resolutions that allow counselors to recuse themselves for the resolution in which their compensation is discussed. And we talked to the city attorney. She has done this, she's done option two in numerous cities when they wanted the options to go and the compensation change to go into effect at the same time. It's a little cumbersome, but it's, it gets you through the process. So next slide. So a couple of questions that arose during the committee meetings. The counselor, health insurance change, does it have to apply to all counselors at once or can the, can the pool simultaneously had different benefits? We asked CIS and the pool, which would be, the pool would be the county, city counselors as their own group could have different benefits simultaneously. For example, if you had different cost percentages for those people in January twenty twenty-five versus January twenty twenty-seven, CIS doesn't care that you have different cost splits. They, we just collect it and send the full premium to them. So increase is going to affect for some members, but not other members at the same time. Does it potentially violate the Oregon Equal Pay Act? According to the city attorney, possibly, it's never been challenged, it's never been worked, it's never been gone through on a case. And it will require the elected official to file an equal pay complaint and be successful. So the committee recommended all changes going to affect for all counselors at the same time, that'd be January first. This would require successive resolutions, a resolution to change the mayor's compensation in which the mayor recuses and the council votes. A resolution to change the counselors whose terms expire in twenty twenty-six, in which case those counselors recuse and the mayor and the remaining counselors vote. And a resolution to change the counselors whose terms expire in twenty twenty-four, in which case those counselors declare a perceived conflict of interest and they can either vote or recuse themselves and the remaining mayor and counselors vote. The reason on number three, they only have to declare a perceived conflict of interest is they don't, they don't know for sure that they will be a city counselor as of January twenty, January first, twenty twenty-five, so there may not be an actual conflict of interest. Frequency review, again, currently stipends can increase annually by the CPI if the council adopts a resolution each year. That resolution, as I previously said, would need to be passed using the same procedure as described on the previous slide. And if the council accepts the committee's recommendations to significantly increase the monthly stipends, the next question would be how often would that comp, that compensation be reviewed? Committee did not address this issue. Staff would probably recommend that council compensation be reviewed when the market study for non-represented employees is conducted every three years. That way you're not visiting this every year, if, depending on what stipend you end up setting. So. So before we discuss, it says discuss in rotation, but we should go back and discuss the compensation first because that'll be.
I had a, I had a question about, in this, in the recommendation from the budget committee members who brought this forward. In the proposal you brought, is it a reduction in the city's budget or an increase in the city's budget?
Neither one. You'll see, if you adopt what they're recommending,
Decreases.
Your expense decreases from a hundred and forty-six to probably about a hundred and thirty thousand per year.
So, yeah, I want to just make a couple of comments to some of the comments I heard. This is, this, I think, I appreciate the work. I know, I mean, I had HLB, I, you guys really discussed this multiple meetings and this actually costs less money to the taxpayers. So when people are like, I can't do this, this is too much. It's basically reallocating funds. And so the council compensation, what I have read from other cities and read, you know, my thought process of doing this job, council compensation should help alleviate the pressure that's put on people to run for council. So I took five unpaid days this year. Five hundred dollars, no, ten unpaid days, five hundred dollars a day, that was five thousand dollars. That's not, there's no expense account to get that back, right? So that's why the council compensation, so childcare. When I first got elected, my son was three, right? So people, when we, so when we go to our city's values, financial stewardship. This financially is a smart decision. Community engagement, listening to the budget committee, trying to say like, hey, we want to encourage people and make sure they are compensated so they can do the job. Equity, diversity and inclusion. Putting value, letting people choose what they do with their compensation instead of saying, hey, we have a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of value in health insurance. That really only meets a few groups of people. And strategic long-term planning. Folks, people, I'm so worried, like, you have to meet, you have to create policy to help, like, adjust. I'm just afraid, who is going to want to do the jobs we are doing? Like, I am all, I love it. I love our country, I love government. But it takes a certain amount of wealth and time to be able to do this. And we are, this is not a huge increase. This is actually a decrease. It's just saying, hey, we're going to give you cash so you can choose. Do you need to buy into family health insurance? That's still an option. Do you need childcare? Are you driving your car a whole lot? Do you have to take time off work to go to this meeting? So to me, and I think, you know, you are worried about what the, I think, you know, this is totally a good time to bring it. It's an election cycle. The way you get public comment is you bring a resolution forward and you have a public hearing and you invite people to tell us. But to me, when I look at our city values and I look at the financially, that it's actually a smarter financial decision for the city, I can't see anything negative about moving to what the committee's recommendation was. Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
First of all, I asked, why did you decide to create a separate stipend for a council president?
Our understanding was that the council president has some additional responsibilities and duties that sometimes befall upon that person that are not ones that are common to the rest of the city council members.
Well, I, my understanding of the role, since I'm in it, the, the additional responsibilities only come when the mayor is absent from, and being not able to do that. And unless the mayor asks, then the council president is no different than any other counselor. And, and when you have, when you, and if you don't get asked in an entire year to do anything, then there's no justification for an additional amount of money for a council president. I just don't see that.
I think our, our thought process, Counselor Rippey, was that first of all, it's likely that a council president would be asked, never guaranteed, of course. But secondly, that that person needs to be available and willing to do the job at any time that that's necessary. And so that's worthy of some extra consideration.
So the, thank you, thank you. The other comment I, the other comment I would have is that I, I'm still not comfortable with the, the transparency and the accountability of, of this, these recommendations. I certainly think that people should be compensated for the expenses that they incur. But the, but providing a large stipend does not give the voters transparency as to what that those funds are being used for. The intent is that they be used for expenses incurred in the role as members as elected officials. But there's no guarantee that that's the case. And without some mechanism of accountability, it is just uncomfortable to me to think that the money, the taxpayers' money could be used for, for things other than actual city work.
Of course, it's used that way now with health insurance premiums.
Well, that's what was offered. I'm not saying it's the right, that's the right system.
I'm not saying it's right either. I'm saying it's the case that right now a citizen has no way of knowing.
Well, as far as transparency, I agree with you a hundred percent. I agree with you.
Yeah, we don't know. But if I know that as a council president, you make X and as a counselor you make Y, for these dollar amounts, it doesn't seem to me critical that the breakdown of how that's going to be spent is necessarily something the public has a keen interest in. If we were talking, you know, six-figure stipends, well, that may be a very different discussion, but we're talking about nobody's going to live off these stipends. All that you can expect is that they will probably be able to defer some of their expenses that they would otherwise have and be able to adjust their personal circumstances to allow them to serve. That's, I think, that was our thinking anyway, was that these weren't, these weren't enough, large enough dollars that you could look at them and say, I need to know how they're spending the eight thousand dollars. It's not that much.
I mean, there are other people in town I would think, I would have, would take exception to that. Particularly the people that are on poverty and low income would, would take exception to that.
Could be.
Yeah.
But do you feel like there's any scrutiny about how you're spending the stipend you have now?
What stipend?
The small stipend that you have now. It's small.
Yeah.
But is it scrutinized?
Is it scrutinized?
Yeah. I mean, do you feel a need to explain how you're expending those funds to your constituents, the small funds that you do receive?
I explain it a lot, tell them a lot, exactly what I get, how I use. It's asked a lot.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that we should still do that. I think that's our job as elected officials, like I would have no problem explaining. And I think too, through the public, okay, so Counselor Ewing.
So I'm kind of old school in this, in this respect. I don't feel that the taxpayers should have to fill in for my short-sightedness in not knowing the amount of work that will go into the job and not knowing where my dollars that I get are going. I'm not comfortable with going from a volunteer position. And quite frankly, that is an empowerment because every time a citizen comes up and says, I pay your salary, I explain to them as Counselor Rippey does exactly what I get. I'm empowered by the fact that I'm a volunteer, that I'm not paid to do this job. And it gives me that empowerment to know that the community is involved in any kind of financial increase that we're doing as a city. And I beg to differ. People will know that this is a large increase. People will come and resent that this is a large increase, all in one shot, particularly in these economic struggling times. So to say that, you know, well, it isn't that big. I promise you, there are people in our community that are living and having to survive on that type of salary. So no, I, I don't buy that argument. I'm not happy with not putting this before the voters, not being transparent in it. And to say that, well, it's, I, I'm just, yeah. As it stands now, I am not able to support this. I want to see more on reimbursements. I want to see more on accountability. And I certainly want to make sure that this would go before our city and our taxpayers, before we make this type of kind of commitment that our community hasn't been involved in. Not, and I'm not discouraging you, Dave, or the group that you worked with. I'm just not sure that the reality of the job is actually fully understood. And I'm sorry that somebody has to take their own time to be mayor, but this certainly was known. And I'm sorry that what you, the contract that you work under doesn't allow you to take that time paid. But that's the reality of the job that we got elected for. So, yeah, I have real problems with this at this point.
So a couple of things really quick before Counselor Gusterson. When the council decided to make healthcare be their compensation, was that taken before the voters and were you a member of this council?
I was not a member of this council. And as far as I know, because I was not a member of this council, the first I knew about it was after I was elected. And I was a bit shocked that there was no discussion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gusterson.
Yeah.
I have quite a bit to say about this as well. And, and have some, some questions that I want to go to both Dave and the rest of the council. So I think we, we still have more.
Keep going, sorry, just going to hear you.
I think we have more conversation that we need to have here, but it is nine thirty, it is late. And I move that we table the remainder of this conversation and the budget subcommittee report for another meeting.
Okay, so it is past our time. I just want to make one comment before we do this, but I just want to be really clear. I was fully aware of what I signed up when I ran for mayor. But I also feel that my job as a representative of this community is to make sure that we have policies that make it easier for people who are not privileged like me to do this job. I can handle the financial cost. I have parents who live by me who watch my kid, but that is not the case. And it is those members that have been underrepresented that I am standing here saying this is equitable. So I take a little bit, I mean, I'm trying not to, but like, there's no personal digs. I'm looking at this as policy. So I just want to be really clear. Okay, so we will bring this for another work session. Okay, so we will bring this for another work session. Work session adjourned.
I made him, I made him.
I'd like to call to order the Forest Grove City Council meeting on Monday, June 24th. Will the city recorder please call, roll?
Council President Rippey?
Here.
Councilor Gustafson?
Oh, I should have waited. I'm really sorry, I didn't wait to see if my people were on Zoom yet. Councilor Valenzuela is. Sorry. It's my first mistake. I'll make five more before the meeting's over. Okay, let's just go.
Councilor Martinez?
Oh, here.
Councilor Marshall?
Here.
Councilor Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilor Ewing?
Here.
Councilor Gustafson?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Toallatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I've got readers and I don't know how to use them quite yet, but. Our next agenda item is proclamation. Okay, so. Okay, designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Forest Grove, Oregon, and whereas our Parks and Recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of, we should say, of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, where you belong, in Forest Grove, Oregon, Washington County, and encourages all residents of Forest Grove to celebrate the vital role parks and recreational, recreation professionals play in bringing people together, providing essential services, and fostering the growth of our community. And continuing with our Parks and Recreation Month, I'm going to invite, who I believe is the longest Volunteer Commission member that the city of Forest Grove has, with over 30 years volunteering on the Parks and Rec Committee, Mr. Paul Waterstreet, up to the, or up to the podium.
Thank you. We're here to recognize a couple of groups and people that volunteer work for all around the city, county a little bit, but mostly in the city. And I'd like here, like to recognize different groups who are doing this, all in work for the city. And this black guy in the front, and these are all the people and groups since 2010 have been, have been recognized for the different things. So that's why I get the privilege of representing the Parks and Rec Commission and handing out these awards for the group. So, our first one, Susan. This is Susan Dieter Robinson. And this is for the Annan Abbey yard at Rogers Park. And when I started thinking about this, I was thinking, well, what can I say that Susan's done for the park? And it came down to concept, design, funding, construction, modification, repair, making this organized groups for annual cleanups, and then just using the park and being a really good steward of the park out. And she's been doing this for many years and we really appreciate the work. And she hasn't done it by herself. She has nice group helper, Tom, you can come on up too. You got Alice, you can come up too. So they have specialized Rogers Park and Annan Abbey yard, and that's what keeps that park going. And Tom Martin in the back room, when I say merry-go-round, he'll probably throw something at me. They have a German maker, merry-go-round, and it's work, it's work, it's work. So this is for Susan and her hard work and Tom for his hard work. And it says, Susan Dieter Robinson, in recognition of dedicated service to the city of Forest Grove and citizens of Forest Grove. Forest Grove Parks and Rec Commission and City Council sincerely thank you for your dedicated service and commitment for caring for Annan Abbey yard and Rogers Park. Thank you. Okay, our next one is a group, sometimes it's a specific project, like Boy Scout built birdhouses out of virtual wetland. But this is two groups, three groups, that have done this and they just do different things. And some of the things they've done, before I say that, I'll say that the Rotary International became a club in 1905. And before. And this is the 100th year that the Rotary Club of Forest Grove is celebrating this year being organized group of Forest Grove. I felt really happy for that. So some of the things that these Rotary Clubs do, they schedule them and they do them and to make sure it's okay that it's done. So I saw a picture in 1974, the guys out there with shovels doing the instrumentation, cleaning that up. So probably scholarships, sponsors for about every athletic team in Forest Grove at some point. The uniform with the umpires. And that's for basketball, baseball, swimming, soccer, wrestling, volleyball, water polo. Groups clean up the roads, the road cleanups, they adopt a sign, they have those, they do concours, they go on July. They all get together and it's done. So the Rotary kind of, for me, raised money to give away. Sponsor students that go abroad for a year, sponsor veterans for a year. And these are all volunteer effort. So we'd like to recognize people that helped get this done. And the first one is for the Soon Rotary is Amy Tracewell, the president. The Daybreak Club is Doug Scott. Huh? Come on up again. This is your last official duty. And Hector Mendez, come on up. And these are people that are current or soon to be replaced officers. They change over in July, so this is kind of like your last duty. And the Rotary Club has done all this throughout the year. So, city of Forest Grove in recognition of dedicated service to the city of Forest Grove and citizens, the Forest Grove Parks and Rec Commission and City Council sincerely thank you for your dedicated service, commitment, supporting recreational activities, use, and maintaining parks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to move on to item B on our agenda, which is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councilors present, oh, present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? Is there, is there anyone in the audience who would like to give public comment? Okay, would Mr., yeah, go ahead and come up, Mr. X.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Pete Truax, 3131 Forest Gale Drive, Forest Grove. I came tonight to do two things. One, to congratulate you on the, on the good work that you're doing on the city charter review. I know that's not an easy process and I appreciate all the work that you have put into that as well as what the team did, that the Charter Review Committee did in giving information to you. The other point I would like to talk a little bit about was the council action or work session on the, on the street trees. I am a member of the Forest Grove United Church of Christ, and we are on two of the, two streets that are impacted by, for street tree discussion, 21st Avenue and Main Street. We also have some trees that are raising some issues, raising, obviously, some issues on College Way. And we will probably have that discussion later on. But again, I just want to remind you that, like Counselor Marshall, we are impacted by those street trees with raising concrete, with raising the bricks, with causing those grates to also be raised. And we are, have been in discussion with the city for about the last year or so, 13 to 15 months, about how we're going to rectify that problem. And we appreciate the short-term solution that you have come up with and hope to part the discussion for the long term. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Perfect time. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment who has not signed up? Is there anyone on Zoom? I don't see any attendees, so I'm saying no. So let's move on to our consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I second.
Thank you. Council President Rippey moved to approve the consent agenda and it was seconded by Counselor Martinez. All those in favor, is there a discussion on, no, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. The consent, the, geez, the consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Item D, additions or deletions. City manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Proposed by councillors, Councilor Ewing. You're good now, I think.
Is that for Jesse? Because I lost all audio.
Okay, no, it's for, it's for to the councillor portion. Do you have an addition or deletion?
Yes, I do, please. I would like us to consider two things. One is we've gotten comment about backyard chickens. I would like to have staff put together an idea, bring it forward to us, talk to us about the safety and health of the backyard chickens that was adopted years and years ago with not a whole lot of requirements or controls. And it is a problem as personally, our neighbors had chickens, they passed, the rats took over and swarmed into my yard. So I think that for public safety, we need to have staff look into that and then also perhaps come up with some ideas on how we can better provide for the health of our community. So I would hope we would be able to, I've talked with Jesse, but I hope that we'll be able to have staff do a report on that so that we can be more informed about those concerns that are coming forward. The second is on proclamations. I know that this is the bailiwick of the mayor's position, but many cities have proclamation protocols or processes or policies that require their people that are going to want a proclamation to put that information in at the beginning of the year. Then a decision is made on what proclamations will be actually put forward. The reason I bring this forward and wanting a policy so that we are doing this with overall fairness is that the American Legion came in and they were really distraught, in my opinion, about not being able to get a proclamation for them read. And I questioned this too, well, why weren't they in that proclamation schedule? And there wasn't really an answer as to how it was determined that they wouldn't have a proclamation read. And so I think that opens us up to a lot of liability, particularly on fairness, if we don't have some standard process and policy on those proclamations and who will be able to have a proclamation read. That's a real concern. I think it just helps us legally, as well as we always talk about having policies that create fairness. And I'm not sure that, I don't know how the decision was made, but from my standpoint, there was kind of an unfairness in not reading a proclamation for them. I don't know why that decision was made. I'm just saying as an appearance and perception. So I would like us to consider that. Is there any, any way we could get that discussion and have the staff do some work on what other cities are doing with proclamations and bring it forward in a work session for us?
So Jesse or Paul, what's our next steps on that? Do you need something from the council or?
So, hi, Mary, can you hear me okay?
We can.
So, under section six, B, 6.3B of the council rules, it says, if a council member wishes to propose an item for a future agenda, the council member must propose the agenda item at a council meeting and it must be approved by a majority of the council members present at the meeting before being placed on a future agenda. So it does require some form of action by the council if the council wants to have a work session on proclamations. And then staff could bring back some additional information about what other cities have done and that sort of thing.
Jesse, do you mind addressing, so is there a process, though, when community members or service organizations would like a proclamation? And could you answer, I mean, I remember the. I remember the, what I remember the answer was for the legions. It wasn't a federally recognized, it was poppy day, like there were some, so I think that's, but anyways, if you could answer that question, and then do we have, I thought we had a process on the website for whether service organizations wanted one?
One thing that we did recently do was we did publish a process on the website, and so we are now asking if folks do want to have a proclamation to sign up a certain amount in advance, have a sponsoring organization. Basically, it takes section 13 of the council rules and kind of puts it on the website for proclamations. And section 13 says it's, it can be done for community events, community groups, community individuals, and it's at the discretion of the mayor. And so we kind of just outline that process. We did look at some other cities, not in terms of what the policy was, but what their process was for the website. And so it's, it's up and going. Some proclamations are federally recognized, other proclamations are not. Proclamations that have been federally recognized have actually been approved either by Congress or by the administration. So there is also, similar to the process at the city council level, there's a process at the state level and also at the federal level. So there's different types of recognition.
So.
Where, I'm sorry, Counselor.
No, 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 no. So I just want to make sure I have it clear. So whether or not the legion's poppy day was federally recognized would not negate us doing a proclamation. Jesse?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It just.
So what the council rules. That's okay. The council rules are pretty, pretty broad on this, and I'll just go ahead and read it. It says, "Organizations, citizens, or council members may request proclamations that proclaim a specified date or dates to recognize the efforts of various community groups and individuals." And then it outlines the process that it goes to the city recorder, and then to the mayor, and then the actual reading of the proclamations. It says, "Upon approval of the mayor, the city recorder shall prepare the proclamation for the mayor's signature." So that's the process that's outlined in the rules right now for proclamations. So I don't know if that answers your question, Counselor Ewing, but that's the, that's what it says right now.
Well, I think that this is a good example of the fact that I would really like to see a policy, I'd like to see us come up as a team with what we're going to accept as proclamations, when we will accept those proclamations, and making sure that there is a fairness in those proclamations. And if it does not require federal backing, then that would say to me, Jesse, that then it is up to the city to make that decision. And I don't know that there was that consideration made in this. So that's why I say, we've always worked to get policy into place so that there's consistency, there's continuity, and there's fairness. And I don't know that I feel that this process is fair at this point. So I'm going forward and asking, can I get the council to agree on putting this on a work schedule so that we can come up with more defined language, so that it's not just kind of more of an open book? That's what my request is.
Council President Rippey.
I would, I would agree with, with having a work session discussion with regard to both the backyard chickens and the proclamations process. I think I would also add in there, based upon our earlier discussion today, that if we're looking at the council rules, we should address council president term limits as well. And have a couple of work sessions on those items.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion, wait, was, I have a motion from Council President Rippey to have a work session on council rules pertaining to proclamations and to the role of the council president.
And the backyard chickens.
Yeah, and then a second, a second work session on policy, like city code in regards to fowls, I think, like, it's not just chicken, isn't it, like, I don't know, backyard chickens. I think there's a better phrase. Is any discussion, or do I need something else?
Quick question, are you, are you going to leave it to the discretion of the city manager to bring the timing on bringing those work sessions back due to the summer scheduling and some of the stuff in the fall, or do you want to date certain?
I'm not interested in a date certain. I just want to get it on the agenda so that we are addressing it. But with the summer schedule, I wouldn't even hazard a guess as to how you're going to get those in there. So I'll leave that up to you guys.
Okay. All those in favor, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Two work sessions, the city council has approved scheduling of two work sessions on council rules pertaining to proclamations, council president, and a second work session pertaining to backyard chickens and foul animals. That doesn't sound right. Okay, moving on. Sorry about that. Presentations. We have, the council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presentation is from our Parks and Rec Commission, and it's the annual update. And we have, nope, we do not have Brad Bifaro, we have Mr. Paul Waterstreet, who is Parks and Rec Commission member.
Two minutes, or do I get more?
I'm going to give you 30 seconds. I'm just kidding, I'm going to give you, I think you have.
Ten minutes, I think.
No, you have 10 minutes.
10 minutes, oh, okay.
10 minutes altogether, so eight, two for questions.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do it.
Get us caught back up on time, though.
So, just going to tell you what happened over the last year, and then Ann will come up and tell you, kind of fill you in on what's going on right now and what we're planning on doing this year. So, we had an assessment and fee plan, working through the process of cost of services and goal setting, and then pricing tool workshop with stakeholders in multiple meetings, recommendations from city council, adaptation of the continuum and recommended fees. So that's one of the things we're working on, is how much to charge people and when to charge people, et cetera. Universally accessible inclusive playground replacement of all the slides and stuff at Hazel Hills Park. So if you go by there, you see it's all dug up, and I saw some new sidewalks getting laid in there. So that's looking good. Eastside Park, we're moving forward with the community engagement planning of that. So if you've been by Eastside Park over on 19th, it's all been torn down, and we had people come over and say, we'd like this in there, that in there, et cetera. So we've helped the neighborhood, and held a joint meeting with the Forest Grove School District, City of Forest Grove, City of Cornelius, and Pacific University regarding the future of recreation in Forest Grove and Cornelius. And I think that could be an amazing thing. You have four really good groups to work together, and I think you could really come up with some unique things to do, and how to charge fees on it, and what you want to do with it. So that would be awesome to see all those four people, four groups work together and come up with something really unique. The Forest Grove Loop Trail and Kyle Park Community Engagement Planning is going on, and we've received three grants from Metro Neighborhoods and Community Choice Grants. So, of course, Loop Trail is down off of B Street and 15th, and the Kyle Park, we had people come over, community come over and take a look at it and see where it is, and that's across the street from Waste Management. And the Aquatic Center has put in two new slides, they're a little higher than the old ones are, and so it's a little bit thrill. And then they're working on a summer program. If you go by there, you'll see the Bray Park in much greater use now that it's hot outside, so a lot of people are using that. And you'll see the start of recreation programming, things like Skyhawks and pickleball. You go to Rogers Park, and they have all kinds of activities for children to do over there, and they're starting to fill up, and they're starting to use Rogers Park over there with the big container box where everything is stored. So keep an eye out for that. And the commission continues to work with the department to create a positive future for recreational use of everything out there. So, we're looking forward to the upcoming year. We've done a lot last year, we got a lot of things that are just carried over to this year right now. Questions?
Questions for the Parks and Rec Commission. Council President Rippey.
Thank you, Paul, for that. Pickleball has become a much more popular sport, and is just exploding. And I understand that the chamber is trying to have a pickleball tournament go on, but we're very limited to the number of pickleball courts. Has the commission considered or talked with the department about how to try and address the number of pickleball courts we have in town? We've had, we had one person show up six months ago to ask that question of when can we get some more pickleball courts? So they have kind of redesigned Joseph Gale a little bit to do. And Steve works at Calc, and they use the Army for pickleball, and that's now available for everybody instead of just the school district, so you can go over there a couple nights a week to play. And the other courts that are, could be available with a little negotiation would be the school district, because they have courts at the high school, and I'm not sure the university is open to that, because they got some nice courts. But I did go by there, and there were students playing pickleball out there. You could hear it play. So we will address that more, because I think there's some more courts out there that we can use. Thank you.
Counselor Gustafson.
Just a, just a comment about, about pickleball courts and finding other courts that we can use. There was a conversation we had with the school districts and some other people that got together for that work session a while back. And one of the subject matters that was brought up was having a unified room calendar, so that schools, city, other nonprofits could have access to requesting space. And some of the schools, whether it be the gym, classrooms, that sort of thing, this could follow to that category as well, is finding out what our, what our resources are in, in both Forest Grove and Cornelius for us to share. I'm not really sure where we are on that project, but that's just something to keep in our thoughts when we're thinking about room scheduling.
And just to add on to the pickleball comment, and my other job, I work at Neil Armstrong, and so they're building this summer as part of the bond project. They're building an outdoor covered area, and so the PE department got to help with the lines, and there's going to be pickleball courts there. So if it's outside, it's obviously school hours, you know, a group would have to bring their own net, but like, there's going to be lines there. Usually, outside of school hours, school property is open. But I think those are also comments we need to have, hopefully with our consultant, and working on recreation between those four groups.
Yeah, I think those four groups could really come up with some very unique things for more pickleball courts that are out there. Like the new ones at Cornelius, they're building new stuff out there, so I'm going to assume that there's going to be some pickleball space available that people could get creative out there. And I don't know who owns the area on the south side of Cornelius, where all the new housing is going in out there, the huge park out there. So that, to me, is a potential pickleball heaven out there.
Right. Well, any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Waterstreet, for coming and representing your group.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Always nice to see you. Okay, our next presentation, we're just going to continue with our parks theme of the night, and we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Anne Lane, coming to talk about the Loop Trail and the Kyle Park update.
So thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Council. I have Adrian Esteban and Jill Roselle of Alta Planning and Design joining me this evening. Alta was the selected consultant for the Forest Grove Loop Trail Master Plan and the Kyle Park Design Project. They'll be providing an update this evening on that project, on the project, and progress made to date, and where we're headed next. Thanks.
Thank you. A good evening, and thank you for your time today to present an update on the Kyle Park and Forest Grove Loop Trail. So, a little overview of the presentation. We'll look at a little bit about the schedule, where we are, where we're going. We'll talk about community engagement update, we've had some events, and we'll talk about, give an overview of the Forest Grove Loop Trail. That will be Jill presenting that. We'll look at where we are with Kyle Park. That's a project that'll be designed and constructed. And then we will speak a little bit about the project-related metro grants that were mentioned earlier, and then we'll have some time for you. So, we started with community engagement back in May of this year, so we've had several events happen over the last couple of months. For the Loop Trail Master Plan that Jill and her team are leading, we are starting with the existing conditions assessment. The next steps will be into going into alternative analysis, and then selection of a preferred alternative, and then finalizing with an implementation. For Kyle Park, we started earlier in the year with looking at existing conditions, and we'll share here a little bit later what some of the existing conditions are in the park. We are now currently in the concept schematic design phase. The next phase beyond that will be design development, and eventually the construction documents that we anticipate happen by January 21. So some of the events that have been taking place here over the last two months, Forest Grove Farmers Market on May 1st was attended. We attended the Pacific University Powwow early in May. We had our first technical advisory committee meeting mid-May, and then our first stakeholder advisory committee meeting earlier. We also had an event at Kyle Park on June 13th, which was well-attended, and we'll talk a little bit later about some of the things we're hearing from, from the public, as well as our advisory committee.
Can you hear me okay? Great. So for the Forest Grove Loop Trail overview, you already have a great trail system here, as you know, and there's a lot of awesome connectivity, and we're just looking to create the loop and connect everything even further. So as Adrian mentioned, we've been working on the existing conditions inventory. And as a part of that, there is actually a website that's available, that's LinkCity, where we looked into kind of connections with bike facilities, the regional network, roadways, transit, and then also an environmental assessment, including looking at floodways, wetlands, geography and natural resources. All that was largely a desktop assessment. We've also been communicating with Clean Water Services and talking about impact and mitigation efforts. And then we've come out, and done a field assessment where we walked some potential alignments. Here you see the orange line there, that was kind of a proposed alignment from a previous plan, and we are realizing it's very challenging due to the narrow right-of-way and steep slopes, and we started looking at some other alignment opportunities, and we're going to have the alignment alternatives for you to consider coming up soon. Yeah, so in the, the south, it's actually, the alignment is much more straightforward next to Kyle Park. There's more or less a path that is already existing there, and we would just look at improving connections and access to the neighborhood, and creating some more community gathering spaces, and improving the existing trail network as best we can.
Thank you, Jill. So next, we'll look at Kyle Park overview of the park. So we, like I mentioned earlier, we did an assessment of the site, and this is just to give you a general sense of where the site is. So this is B Street, trailhead is next to it, the B Street self-storage, but the property of the Kyle Park location, that's up there on the far left. And on the, on the south, we have Gale Street, that the park abuts right up to that. This kind of gives you a general context of where the Kyle Park location is. As I mentioned, we are looking at the existing conditions, and you can see park open space right there that surrounds the. right there that surrounds the B Street Self-Storage. Obviously, a self-storage location is, is within the park area, a private property. But I think our, our team would, you know, think that this would be a much bigger park if we were able to somehow relocate that B Street Self-Storage. So, next, next slide. Based on our site assessment, you can see there's a lot of green space, open space. You also see, you know, Gale's Creek that surrounds the park. So this is just some photos of the site to give you a sense of what the photography is and some of the, the elements that are out in the site. So, site assessment, the park is located within the flood zone. The purplish line that you see there is the flood zone boundary. And then the hundred-year flood is the purple dotted line that you see. So about forty percent of the park is located within the flood zone. And then the hundred-year flood boundaries that around the park at the bottom end. So that signifies that there's a one percent chance of flooding there on an annual basis. That's what the hundred-year flood would be. And so it gives you a general sense of the, some of the things that we're dealing with as we're designing, looking at elements. So this is a, opportunities and constraints. The round orange dot you see there would be a location for a trailhead, parking area. The orange is really a flat potential site for a lot of different amenities in the park. And then the green is where you have steeper terrain, which could be an opportunity to implement some of the bike facilities. So as we did the site assessment, our next step was really talking to the community and understanding what some of the things they would want within the park. So there was a strong interest in both of the projects with a lot of support for some of the pragmatic ideas like a trailhead, bike facilities, play areas, et cetera, also with wetland restoration, particularly near Gale's Creek. There was excitement about the trail expansions, some concerns for the mixed use of cyclists and walkers. There was an interest in perhaps having separate lanes and this is mainly thinking about the trail loop. They want to keep the park setting natural and make character to remain natural and rustic. But keeping it simple. There was a strong support for a nature playground within the park. And then advocacy for play areas for all ages and abilities, including equipment for teenagers like pump track escape. And finally, there was the request for space for dogs and designated dog parks or on the walking trails, having them in. So based on that feedback, we started putting together some ideas of what could be, so up on the top row there, you could see what a bike and a pump track is essentially skills track for mountain biking and other biking abilities. There was also interest in pavilions and restrooms and we have some ideas there, some examples of what that could look like, as well as picnic areas, places for people to congregate. Speaking to inclusive play, different types of playgrounds that allow kids of all abilities to be able to participate. Nature play, so finding a way to utilize some of the existing amenities that are there, being able to make that into a play area that retains a natural feel to it. And then some ideas for wetland restoration and improving the area where we have what. So right now, we're at the, at the diagram stage, we're looking at how we use, utilize the space. So what you see here right now, we're considering three options. First option has a moderate sized bike skills park, that is the area in pink. And then picnic and, and nature and play facilities in the south Meadow area. And then playgrounds both north and south of the park. The other option we're looking at is maximizing the bike skills park located both north and south. You see that the pink area is there, leveraging the existing topography in the northeast where we get some steeper terrain. The parking area and trailhead are a little bit larger capacity there. That's right next to the B Street Storage. And then the playground program is a little bit smaller to accommodate the large. Third option we're looking at is maximizing wetland restoration program, particularly in the flood-prone creekside area, including some bird blind observation overlooks. Picnic and nature play facilities in the north Meadow and minimizing the bike skills park to be down. So this is just a closer look of where certain amenities would be, the same three options, a little closer layout. So we've evolved from the blobs of color to signify the area, so that we're starting to put some concept plans together. This is currently where, where we're at, at that level, schematic design. Look forward to the next time that we meet with you having a lot more information and more design. As was mentioned earlier, there are some metro grants that have been given for the project that we're looking to take advantage into our design. So one of them is Wetland Restoration at Kyle Park, the grant award of one hundred and thirty-four thousand to improve wetland restoration. The other one is the Pollinator Pathway on the Loop Trail, grant award of eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight thousand, four hundred. And the last one is the Indigenousizing the Loop Trail, grant award of one hundred and forty-seven thousand to provide, bringing indigenous elements to the trail. So those are all grants that were received recently. And so that really gives an opportunity to use that and implement it into the design that we are able to accommodate this. Thank you.
Counsel President Rippey.
I got lots of questions. So first of all, when you're looking at the Loop Trail, well, let me back up. Several years ago, there was a large, or a conference that brought in people from all of the regional trail. So you had people from the Banks, Vernonia, the Salmonberry, all of the trails, to include the Council Creek and Yam Halas. If you look at a map of all those regional trails, Forest Grove is the hub, next to them all. So when you're planning the Loop Trail, would you please keep that into consideration? That this is a hub? And that might also be some room for some extra funding too, if you consider that. So, on the Loop Trail, and I think Anne probably has the question of this or answer, is the Lower Forest Glen Park part of that Loop Trail plan?
Well, that is uncertain at this time.
Is what?
Uncertain at this time as we're exploring best routes. That's a challenging area.
Yeah, it's a challenging area, but it's probably very underutilized.
I totally agree.
All right. Kyle Park, I liked option three and the reason I liked option three was that it gave the local residents to the north there the most respect for quiet. If you put bike, bike things up there, there's going to be noise. And those people up there have backyard porches facing that area. And they're not certain that they're going to want a bottle, a lot of bike noise. So I like option three. The north part of option three. So if you can figure out how to do something else there, that's fine. The other question I had there was, you know, you see that area to the west? That's kind of a light yellow. It's not part of Kyle property, but is that in the city limits? Do we know? It is.
Where are you at right now?
So if you, yeah, right there. There's a big field there and I'm, if that's city property, I'm curious as to why we don't include that.
Yes, it's in the city limits. No, it is not city property. It is owned by the development company that constructed that neighborhood, Gale's Creek Terrace.
Okay. All right. And then when we talked about wetland restoration, I've been out there in Kyle property, there's all sorts of old cement, old asphalt, old, you know, just, it's horrible. So to what extent is the wetland restoration going to go? Are you, are you going to try and take all that stuff out?
We will really look to our partners at Clean Water Services to help guide us through that. And also with Metro, as obviously they're a terrific partner in this too. And have, both parties have great interest in it. But we'll work closely with them to determine what is the extent of the cleanup and the restoration, what does that look like?
That's a challenge. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. That's all I had, thank you.
You're welcome. I have a few comments and then a couple of questions as well. Wait, I'll go to Counsel Ewing. Go ahead Counsel Ewing.
Thanks, I have, excuse me, a question about the input on Kyle Park. I know there was a lot of electronic information about it, but we still, again, and I'd like to remind people that we have community members that do not have access to those electronic type of notifications. So along that line, is there a way to still provide input for Kyle Park from those community members who were not aware that there was an open house going on?
There's definitely going to be more opportunities for input. And I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure about the electronic input. Do you, do you speak more to that, Anne?
So yes, there is still plenty of opportunity to provide input. I will communicate with Stephanie, our communications gal, and see if there's any opportunities coming up in print version that she can include some, some way for people to connect with us in that fashion.
I'd appreciate that. And please remember also, Anne, when you talk with Stephanie, that those also need to be in bilingual so that our community members that not only don't maybe have access to electronics, but also have print material, that that information about input and open houses and those types of things also need to be done in Spanish. Another question that I had regarding the natural area and park, I agree that I think that option three meets also more of the community outline area need for quiet peace, those types of things. But I'm curious that we're talking about bikes and the noise, are we talking only about non-motorized bikes?
So at some point, we will, we will need to have a conversation with Counsel about what is City of Forest Grove's position on motorized transportation on trail systems. That's, this is a sticky one, so, yeah, to be continued.
I, I would hate for us to do it as an afterthought and have people in there using their motorized, especially if we're looking to make it more of a natural setting, using motorized vehicles, not just for the sound, but also for the damage that it does to the environmental area. When you're talking about, my last question, when you're talking about, you know, the wetlands and the cleanup, is there a way, and this is just more kind of a philosophy type of thing, but I would like to see especially young people who are going into biology, going into ecology, those types of things where they can help participate in how that restoration could take place, but also hands-on experience in that restoration?
Yeah, I, I think there is opportunity ahead of us to work with some local partners. I'm thinking about Pacific University in particular on this, so, yeah, I think there's plenty of opportunity in front of us.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you guys for coming this evening as well.
Okay, I have just a couple of comments and questions. First of all, thank you, Anne, for getting those grants and looking for them, finding them and doing that. I really enjoy working with Place and Alta, is it Alta? Yeah, so thank you all for your work. But I guess I'm questioning, I want to know a little bit more about the timeline of more engagement, because I would assume you're going to take these options from working with Place before, take these options back out to community events and then do a little dot activity. I would just like to say that the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, the students on that would like to be a part of helping you all at, at the capacity you would like to help them. So they would also like to be a part of that. Yeah, I think that all three of these options are good. The other thing I would say is that that neighborhood, Gale's Creek Terrace, does not have a good park space. So I really do hear what Counsel Rippey's saying, but I also think that it's like, the more, the more options you can fit in for, because that, that development was built, right, like high density, multi-use, like mixed family. I mean, so I think really making a concerted effort to engage with that community, if it's even going to their little park, they have like one slide and saying like, hey, this is what we're doing down here, what would you like to see? Because I really think that this park is going to be a continuation of that neighborhood and really help alleviate that. That neighbor, I don't know if you guys ever go in there, but the roads are really small and like, this is such a good place for kids to go, close by their house, that gets them out of the road and there's parking on both sides, it's like a total, it just gives me high anxiety, right, when I go in there. So I see this as being really good. So it's hard for me to say, I think all these options are good, but I really think, you know, you want to make sure that you check with the neighborhood and what we're really missing in our whole park system. Right, and that, oh, and then one other thing I want to say is that pump bike track, there was a group that came to the Parks and Rec Commission, literally like two meetings before COVID happened and we're, they were going to work to redo Lincoln Park. And then I believe the pandemic happened and some things, so that would be, so that was in the plans five years ago from Lincoln Park. Just going back at the vault a little bit, so I don't know if you want to reach out to them as well. Okay, those are my comments.
I do want to say we have reached out to those folks and we have them actively engaged with us on this project. And they are super excited, yes.
Okay, good, 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 cool. Awesome, well, thank you all so much. Thanks for coming out, have a great night. Okay, we are now moving on to item F on our agenda, which is Public Hearings Ordinances and Resolutions. So, let's switch gears. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-29. If approved by the City Council, this resolution will establish the surface water management rates for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Do any counselors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. Will staff plead, or does staff have a report?
Brief report, yes. Starting July 1 of 2017, the city started setting its own local surface water management rate and Clean Water Services sets the regional rate. The city, Clean Water Services is proposing a four percent rate increase effective July 1, 2024. And the cities, the city is proposing matching that four percent increase. The current city's rate is nine dollars and seven cents for the city portion. And the city is proposing a four percent increase, which should take it to nine dollars and forty-three cents per month effective July 1, 2024. If you take the impact of both the Clean Water Services and the city's rate increases, it will increase the total cost by forty-seven cents per equivalent dwelling unit per month from eleven dollars and seventy cents to twenty dollars and seventeen cents per month for a single-family residence. Take any questions the council has.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now call on persons who have signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents signed up to testify? Seeing none, are there any on Zoom? No attendees at all. Are there any opponents who would like to testify? Seeing none. Anyone who would like to give other comments? Seeing none. So there's no response from staff to testimony? So the hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from Counsel to approve the resolution?
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-.
I move that we approve resolution 2024-29.
Second.
Resolution 2024-29 was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Is there, are there any additional questions or further discussion from the council on the motion before we proceed? Seeing none. Will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Excuse me, I was going to read those. Resolution 24-29, establishing surface water management parentheses, swim rate for the City of Forest Grove effective July 1, 2024, and repealing resolution number 23, 2023-30.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
We didn't hear you, Counselor. Still have, we're still not getting volume.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. The vote is seven to zero. Resolution 2024-29 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item F2, which is resolution 2024-30. I will now open the public hearing on resolution 2024-30. If approved by the city council, this resolution will establish sewer utility rates for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. Does staff have a report for council?
Yes. Similar to swim rates, sewer rates were separated out between Clean Water Services and the city in July 1, 2017. For this next coming year, Clean Water Services proposing a 4% increase of the regional sewer rates as of July 1, 2024. Staff is proposing a matching 4% increase to the local rate as of July 1, 2024. As is our practice to match the Clean Water Services rate increases to keep pace with increasing costs. Pro's resolution would increase the city's base rate from $10.29 to $10.70 per dwelling equivalent unit, and the usage charge from 50 cents per thousand gallons per month to 52 cents per thousand gallons per month. The increases to both Clean Water Services and the city sanitary sewer rates will increase the total sewer rate for typical residential customer from $56.70 to $59.07 per month, or it's totaling increase of $2.37 per month. Take any questions the council may have.
Questions for staff? Seeing none. I will now call on persons who signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents who would wish to testify? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Anyone who would like to give other comments? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council to approve resolution 2024-30?
I move we approve resolution 2024-30.
That can, Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you. Resolution 2024-30 was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Gustafson. Are there any additional discussion or questions from the council on the resolution? Seeing none. Will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 2024-30, establishing city sewer utility rates for the City of Forest Grove effective July 1, 2024, and repealing resolution number 2023-29.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. The vote is seven to zero. Resolution 2024-30 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Moving on to item F3, resolution 2024-31. I will turn it over to Mr. Downey.
This is a resolution to accept the Clean Water Services rates for fiscal year 2425. Our city code requires that the council accept the Clean Water Services rates, which is the reason why we bring this resolution to you. The resolution, the rates, the Clean Water Services are talking about, we've already talked about the swim and the sewer rates themselves being a 4% increase and the fiscal impact, total fiscal impact to residential customer for those. Clean Water Services is proposing a 2%, 2.7% increase for the sewer SDC from $6,824 to $7,009 per dwelling equivalent unit, and a 2.7% increase in the swim SDC from $660 to $678 per equivalent unit. The city, the city retains 20% of the sewer SDC. Clean Water Services receives 80%. And the, the city retains all of the swim SDC. We don't, we don't remit any of the swim SDC back to Clean Water Services. So that's staff. Paul, take any questions council may have?
Questions for staff? Seeing none. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve resolution 2024-31.
Resolution 2024-31 was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Marshall. Is there any further discussion or questions from the council? Seeing none. Will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 24-31, accepting Clean Water Services sanitary sewer utility rates, surface water management swim rates, swim system development charges as paragraph FDC, and sanitary sewer SDC effective July 1, 2024, and repealing resolution number 2023-31.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Gustafson? Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution 2024-31 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Moving right along to resolution 2024-32, we'll go back to Mr. Downey.
The city adopted its current investment policy on August 22, 2022. To make sure the policy stays current and in line with best practices, the policy requires annual review and adoption by the city council. Staff has reviewed the current investment policy with our investment advisors, and we're recommending no change to the policy. There were, we made numerous changes when the policy was last adopted by the council in 2022. This policy does not apply to the city's defined benefit plan investments, which are covered by a separate policy, since the, what you can invest in between the defined benefit plan and the city's regular funds is vastly different. City currently has approximately $84 million in cash and investment in all funds. Approximately 27.5 million of those are invested in the local government investment pool, which is managed by Oregon State Treasury. The remainder, approximately $56.5 million is invested in US government treasuries and agencies with varying maturity dates through December 8, 2028. So we have been working with our investment, outside investment frame to ladder our investments. So we have investments rolling over continually, like one every three months or so. That way, as interest rates change, we can deal with the changing interest rates better. So I'll take any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve resolution 2024-32.
I second.
Second, Counselor Gustafson.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 2024-32 was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Is there further discussion from the council? Online, seeing none. Okay, will the city, will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 2024-32, re-adopting the investment policy for the City of Forest Grove dated June 24, 2024, and repealing resolution number 2022-56.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution 2024-32 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Moving along to item F5. Resolution 2024-33, making appointments to City of Forest Grove Advisory Boards, Committees and Commissions. I'm going to let Assistant City Manager, Mr. Downey, do that.
And last fall, you interviewed and appointed 15 members to boards and commissions. Due to the number of remaining vacancies, we conducted another recruitment to try to fill those boards and commissions on vacancies that occurred from March 15 through April 30. And we advertised and accepted applications. The council had a work session on June 10, interviewed applicants and reached consensus on the, the appointments that are listed in the resolution. So tonight, council bought forth that resolution for council approved to make those appointments.
Any questions for staff? I don't really have a question. I just want to make a statement. I just really appreciate people volunteering to serve the community. You know, we had our Parks and Rec CCE, now a planning member, coming in on your own time and working for our community is the greatest gift you could give. So I just want to say thank you. Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve resolution 2024-33.
A second. Thank you. Resolution, hang on, let me make sure I write this down. Resolution 2024-33 was moved by Counsel Gustafson and seconded by Counsel Martinez. Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Resolution 2024-33, making appointments to City of Forest Grove Advisory Boards, Committees and Commissions is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Item F6, resolution 2024-34, is about an intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Grove School District and the city. I'm going to invite our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Anne Lane, up. Hello again.
All right. In May, the Forest Grove School District was notified that they would receive funding through Oregon Department of Education to provide recreation and enrichment services for students participating in summer school programs. Shortly after, the school district was notified of the award. They reached out to the City of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation Department and invited us to be the primary service provider. School district funds received by Oregon Department of Education will be utilized to compensate the City of Forest Grove for services rendered as outlined in the attached intergovernmental agreement. It is estimated that approximately 550 youth ages three years to 17 years will be served by the City of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation through this opportunity that otherwise would not have likely been able to participate in regularly scheduled Parks and Recreation summer. But happy to take any questions.
Of course, I have questions. I think this is great. But I'm just curious, so with this funding and this program, is it going to be specifically used by, are you just going to do an extended day program almost? Like they'll go to school, do academics in the morning and then have recreation after that?
So Cody, our recreation coordinator, and I have been meeting regularly with the school district to figure out what is the best approach to deliver these services. Many of the grade levels have opted to have us come in during their instruction time to provide a little bit of a break.
A little P E.
And so we have planned accordingly, but we've also implemented a pretty robust schedule to get the kids out and go to different fun destinations. We also heard in those meetings, a great desire to keep kids engaged throughout the summer and provide a little bit of a carrot to keep them going. So we came up with a, a plan with the school district to make that happen. So there will be some incentives provided by Parks and Recreation along the way with a great big prize at the end. So.
Very cool.
Students participating in the program and their families will have, receive a voucher to go to Washington County Fair and they'll get a full, full access ride bracelet for the. So a big, big reward at the end if they can go to all of their summer school programs and participate in everything.
That's amazing. Is there, can, I mean, you know, I'm going to dream big, but maybe not dream super big, but is, can we use any of the funding for like drop? Like one of the things I've heard in the community and I heard at our, our joint work session is how nice it would be to have like drop in basketball or drop in volleyball or pickleball or whatever it is, you know, in the evening for kids. Kind of like, you know, you drop your kids off at the pool for public swim. Is there anybody use some of that funding to like pilot that so we can show that it works?
So funding constraints are, are pretty, pretty clear there on how we can spend the money, the timeframe, who is to be the recipient of the, our services. So we are pretty limited on what we can, what we can do. But I think Cody and I put together a pretty neat thing for the, for the kids this summer.
Yeah, it sounds amazing. Good job. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? What is the wish of the, of the council? Anybody? Two, two, four, three, four.
I move to approve resolution 2024-34.
I'll second.
Perfect. Resolution 2024-34 was moved by Counsel Marshall and seconded by Council President Rippey. Is there any further discussion from the council? Well, I'm, you know, I'm just pleased to see the school district and the city working together for recreation. And I just think it's a good starting point. You know, hopefully with the consultant and Pacific onboard and Cornelius, we're going to like continue to see, but also in a way that doesn't create more stress on any one organization, but it seems like more of like a help than a hindrance to an organization. So I'm, I'm pleased to see the collaborative approach with this project. Those are my only comments. Anyone else? Okay, so will the Assistant, do you need to read? Yeah. Will the Assistant City Manager read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 2024-34, authorizing city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Grove School District, parentheses FGSD, to provide enrichment activities for students of the FGSD between June 2024 and September 2024.
Great. I think because this has to do with money, we'll do a roll vote. Yeah, well, sorry. Will the city recorder please call, roll?
Counselor Gustafson? Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution 2024-34 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. We are now going to move on to counselor reports. Let's go, usually they have a list and the word, it's okay. It's fine. Let's go. I will start with Counsel President Rippey.
All right, thank you. On Monday, June 17, the Chamber Board held their annual retreat. In that retreat, they highlighted the fact that their membership has increased by nearly 25% in the past year, which is very good. The morning session of the retreat was a discussion of their 2024, 2026 strategic plan. And the afternoon session was a presentation and discussion on the Business Development Center that they will be creating that's been initially funded by our Community Impact. On, I, I was in attendance at the board and commission appreciation gathering. I think it went well. I think the perspective that I've received, the feedback that I've received from both staff and participants was that it was a good venue, a good time. And so, yeah, I think it went well. The Fire Services Task Force met on Friday, June 21. The discussion. The discussion has result, revolved mainly around a need for a reassessment. So the original study with regard to fire services was conducted in 2015. And the the scope of that study, the assumptions that were made, the changes that have occurred since then have kind of compelled us to realize that in order for us to do an accurate assessment of going forward, whether or not to go forward, there needs to be a reassessment. For example, the five jurisdictions, there were five jurisdictions that started. One of them has since withdrawn. When that study was conducted, Cornelius had no levy for public safety. They have since passed two levies, and their most recent one increased the levy by three times. So they have substantial more resources. Forest Grove's levy passed. So there have been quite a number of changes that have occurred that draw into question whether or not the original assumptions are still valid. Part of this has been brought around because in the different options that this group has been looking at, we did a cursory financial comparison, but did not include an in-depth analysis of governance, operations, or, yeah, governance and operation. It did do something on the financial side. One of the other options, quite honestly, is to consider TVFNR. And TVFNR would do their own assessment if asked. We have not asked them. That would be something that all jurisdictions would have to approve to do the ask. So that hasn't, that hasn't been brought before you or the other boards and councils, but it could be an option. And if we want to consider that, then we should have an in-depth analysis of the other option in order to be able to take, because that's what TVFNR, a very in-depth analysis. And we simply wouldn't be able to compare the other option. So we're looking at essentially two phases. The first phase would be to have this group hire a facilitator and do a reassessment of the purpose, the scope, and the assumption. Start there. If, if that results in, we don't, you know, we don't need to go any further, well, that's what it results in. But it may result in a Phase Two, and that, and nobody would go forward with Phase Two without the approval of all jurisdictions. So this, so quote unquote, Phase One is just need to reassess what we're talking about. The, not only have the changes occurred within the jurisdictions involved, but the changes have occurred throughout the region. And the whole industry has changed, the call volume has changed, the type of call volume has changed. The ambulance services have changed. So much has changed that we do, we need to do a reassessment. So that's what the, that's what this group is looking at, looking to do is just a reassessment initially, and then that will define our next steps. All of those steps will be brought to the governing bodies for approval.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Is the first stage, like, so when you say, you know, do the assessment, so are they looking at basically the municipal-run fire department? Like for us, like that's what ours isn't?
That's exactly a good point because that's one of the options. See, one of the options is the status quo. One of the options is an authority. Another option is a district. Our own district or, or some form of a district. Our other option, the status quo doesn't have to, the status quo will probably not continue because current IGAs need to be revived. So there's, there's just so much change going on, and we need to, we need to reassess.
Well, I appreciate your work on it, and can you, will you let Jesse or staff know, like, so when you, when they come back with findings and recommendations, so we can have a work session?
Yep.
Perfect.
That's exactly what I, Jesse, is there anything I missed?
No, no, it was a good report. Thank you, Counsel.
Are you good on your report?
I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a good, that was a long report, and that was a good one. So thanks. Okay, next up on our list is Counsel Gustafson.
Okay, so at the last, last meeting, it's the only meeting that I had. It was noticed that the Festival of Arts event wasn't in the What's Growing On, and I think it was expected to be in that newsletter the last time it went out. I'm not sure if it was full or if something weird happened. But I guess, I guess it wasn't in the newsletter. So they're hoping it goes into the next newsletter. Jesse, I see you thinking, looking, so. Thank you. All right. All right, next one is, they are working on a mural plan. So they're looking at different locations and costs of murals based on the size of the location. They looked at another number of spots in Forest Grove, one of them being Lincoln Park. So there's some really great ideas coming there. I'm excited to see what they figure out. And they're also going to start working on a five-year plan that was requested. I think, Jesse, you requested that the PACs start kind of looking into the future. So they're going to start planning a five-year plan with the understanding that it's a five-year plan, and those things do change as time goes by. So it would be a working commitment. So that is on the list of to-do. Any questions so far? All right. The Seven Generation Sculpture Installation. There was a permit submitted with use of epoxy, which was declined because of, there was something about the epoxy that just was not going to work. I think it was removal of the item. When there's epoxy used is problematic. And so they found an alternative to the epoxy, and that request has been submitted and approved. So we are rolling on the Seven Generation Sculpture. And the last one is the Guardians in the Grove is being installed on July night. So just around the corner in the Rotary Garden. And they're going to wait, probably going to wait until it's installed or until just before it's installed to schedule an actual celebration. They won't schedule the celebration the day it will be complete, just in case something happens that delays that installation. So that's all I have. Anybody have questions, comments, discussion?
Any questions for Counsel Gustafson? Nope. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Counsel Marshall.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Counsel Martinez?
So I attended the Cow Park event. It was well-attended. And then the wind decided the last hour it was going to kick up and try to blow everything away. So it ended early, but it was a really good event. There was a lot of excitement there. I went to the state of Washington County, and she had a lot of good things to say about what they've done, of course. And it was pretty much what we've all talked about as far as their, the building that they've done to be able to house the houseless and, and that. Also attended the Board and Commission Appreciation Reception, and it was a nice reception. I liked the way that it was set up rather than a dinner. It was nice.
That's it? Great, thank you. Counsel Ewing?
Thanks. So the ATM is planned for the 28th from 10 to noon, and we're hoping that that will also help with the Oktoberfest. And people will transition from the ATM and go up and participate and enjoy the Oktoberfest. I understand, Donna, that the Oktoberfest is looking for volunteers. Is that true, and how can somebody in the community support and help you with that?
That is true, and they can email me for the link to sign up. We have a sign-up genius for that. And just another note to that, I spoke with Heather the other day, actually, I think it was at the Mixer. And she was going to send an email out because one of, one of the conversations she said that you had was, how do we get more people to attend these ATMs? And one of the ideas was, we need to meet people where they are, type of thing, instead of having them come to you. And so I invited her to have you all set up booths at Oktoberfest. And because there's so many residents that attend that event, and just have that as your place for your ATM instead of the auditorium. So she'll probably throw that idea out to you. So it'll give you something to kind of chew on for a little bit and see if that will work.
Thank you, Donna. Jesse, can we find out public hearing law? Because we also have to go over the COAT Plan. Can we find out whether that would be doable? Or do we need to do it in the auditorium due to the zooming opportunities in public law? Would you check into that? Because I agree, we want to encourage and go to where the people are, but I'm not sure whether or not this particular event can manage that at this time. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you, Donna. I appreciate the idea, and we'll see if we can at least grow off of getting out more in the community. I know that the team really wants to do that and to be more engaged in where people are rather than just in the auditorium. So I appreciate that. Also, the team went forward, and as I mentioned in my email, that the topic is going to be transportation. And I know, Melinda, that you wanted us to make sure that we invited, like, Rite Connection and those groups. And so we actually do have quite a list of people that we're going to be reaching out. And of course, Grove Link and Rite Connection are both on our list as well, as well as staff coming and helping with questions. So the assignments are going out. In fact, almost each part of the ATM has been assigned. We do have two new members. Very excited about that. And we'll see where we can plug them into assignments as well. Our first pass on the Board Buddy with Engagement happened this month, and it started with the Historic Landmarks Board. So Heather is the Board Buddy from CCE for that particular group. And she said it just went extremely well. They were thrilled to have them there. They were excited to talk about other ways to engage and how to really kind of grow their group. So it was a good idea from the team, and I'm excited to hear back about EDC and the other boards and commissions that also have buddies now. The only group we didn't put a buddy with because of our numbers was Parks and Rec. We made the decision that you guys, Parks and Rec, are going through so much transformation that perhaps we would hold and let that settle a bit before we actively started doing a Board Buddy with them. Team came up with that, and it just kind of has stuck and done very well. Also, I wanted to, did the volunteers. Okay, so also, our July meeting is being moved to the 16th because of holidays and vacations. We need to meet, but we just wanted to make sure that we would have a nice group and forum there. Let's see, Forest Grove Senior Center and Community Center did not meet in June. They will be meeting July 7th, so I'll have more information on that. And I think that that kind of is it. I would like to mention that, and I had talked to Jesse about this a little bit, is that I'm kind of feeling nervous about all of the information coming forward on data centers, especially since it may, portions of it might become quasi-judicial. So I've asked him to please speak to that in terms of, you know, how do we respond to those emails? Do we respond to those emails? And if we do, what is then our next step as a council member? You did that with me, Jesse. Are you comfortable with doing that this evening? Thanks. You can go forward whenever you're ready.
Okay, are we, I think, Jesse, are you, I think he might do it in his city manager report. Are you going to do it now?
I don't. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And that's pretty much it for me. Any questions, any concerns, any last-minute requests? I don't sing or dance, but whatever you guys have, I'm willing to step up and talk about, so.
Great. I don't see any. Thank you for the report. Counsel Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor. So so a couple of things. This summer, the library is going to partner with Meals on Wheels for the summer read. For every 100 hours, adults in the community read or listen to books or podcasts, et cetera, between June 1st and August 5th, the Friends of the Forest Grove Library, City Library will donate a meal. So the goal here is to reach 10,000 hours. So everybody, community members, please go and get your library card and help support this cause. For the other, for the Policy Advisory Board, I have a few things. There was no meeting in May, but we did meet last week, and there were presentations from Community Action and Family Promise of Tualatin Valley with requests. And there had been a request from the Policy Advisory Board to provide an overview of how Community Connect works, how it works within the county. So they presented Family Promise of Tualatin Valley, presented on the Emergency Solutions Grant, EST. And sorry about that. So they, they explained the referral process and how the community members can access these funds and use these services. The other action item here is the Home Investment Partnerships Program. It does allow for auto-cycle request when there is funding available, funding that hasn't been allocated. So we had a presentation from Community Partners for Affordable Housing. They had to, they submitted a request of $535,000 from the home funding to fix a sewer line. The board has already provided funding to this organization. It is a Tier One Community Housing and Development Organization because 51% of their, of their homes are within the county. So this is an auto-cycle request, as I said. So we were able to approve that in the last meeting. The other action item is that home, the Home Investment Partnerships Program. is that home, uh, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, um, is, was requesting, uh, recommended a pause in the cycle. And this is because the policies and procedures need to be updated. So for the, they will not, uh, open again for applications until 25, 26. And, and that's also because, uh, the Oregon Housing and Community Services is also upgrading, uh, their process. So, um, this program, uh, also needs to do the same. So there's going to be a pause that was the recommendation and the board did approve that. So that's, that's all I have from that group.
Thank you, Counselor Valenzuela. Is that, okay, so now we're going to move on to the city managers' report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With regard to the question about quasi-judicial, um, currently there is a land use application. Um, and anytime there is a land use application and staff makes a decision if, uh, the, if somebody contacts the council about that particular land use application, if it eventually gets appealed to the city council, that could become a quasi-judicial land use decision by the council in which you make an order or a decision on that specific application. If you get contacted by anybody about that application, it doesn't mean that you can't talk to them per se. You can, but if you do, then you have to disclose that contact. That's what's called an ex parte contact. It's somebody that is involved either in the decision or party to a decision. And then when that is disclosed, again, if it gets to the council on appeal, uh, then you also have to discuss the nature of that contact. And then also if that contact biases you in any way in making a decision. So if you are receiving an email, for example, from somebody about a land use application and you do choose to respond to it, that response becomes an ex parte communication that needs to be disclosed at a potential hearing, um, if it gets appealed to the city council. If you do not choose to respond to it, um, then you do not have to disclose that. So I hope that answers the question. Counsel, uh, Counselor Ewing, does that address what you mentioned?
Yes, it does. And I appreciate that because often, um, it gets kind of lost. And I want to make sure with as much information that's coming in that, um, we remember that we need to make sure that we're, uh, looking at it as a quasi-judicial. So thank you, Jesse. I appreciate that.
Jesse, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
As the mayor, I tip, like, so I respond with, thank you for taking the time to write this email, give public comment, it will be included in the next council packet. Do I need to disclose that?
Uh, not necessarily.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm not like giving any opinion. I'm just acknowledging I received.
You're just acknowledging receipt of it and then including it in a public.
That was clear, because you said if you respond, you have to disclose it. And I'm, just want to make sure if you respond with an opinion, you have to disclose it. If you respond out of courtesy, which is, I think,
Yeah.
a typical thing I have done in the last 10 years is just say, this is a land use system or issue. I will not discuss it until after the process is finalized. Like I just tell people very candidly, like, there's some things I will not talk to you about. And land use is one of them.
You're absolutely right. I appreciate the clarification. If you respond with some kind of opinion, then that opinion or that substantive comment needs to be, uh, disclosed as part of your ex parte contact. So, thanks for the clarification. A couple of other things real quick. Uh, we had the 2040 stakeholders meeting on Monday of last week. We had great attendance. Uh, we had 13 stakeholders that were there, or the steering committee, excuse me, which has stakeholders on it. Uh, most of the discussion really centered on kind of the outreach process, making sure that, uh, we, it's being inclusive, that we have everybody at the table, that we are, uh, using the venues, um, uh, for, for all of the outreach. So that meeting went really well. Uh, lasted for a couple hours. Um, there was some revisions made to the outreach plan. And, uh, the council will be obviously a part of that plan as well. Uh, so that's, that's moving forward. It was, it was a really good meeting. SSW Consulting was there. Staff was there and as I mentioned, um, uh, I think we had 13 steering committees there, committee members there. Uh, in terms of construction, uh, the east restrooms in the library are in full swing. So you'll see a lot of dust and noise at the library. Sorry to the librarians and to the public that are enjoying the library, but it's been a little noisy and a little dusty, but they're trying to mitigate it as much as they can. But progress is, is, uh, moving forward there. Uh, 26th Avenue is, uh, almost done. They're painting lines, uh, it looks terrific. So kudos to Greg and Public Works and their team. That's looking to be a really good project. We did get our bids for our annual pavement overlay. The bids look good this year. So we're going to get as much done that we reported to the council, if not potentially more. Uh, so we're pretty, pretty excited about that. That will include a lot of, I think we have 84 ADA ramps and curb ramps, uh, in that project. We also have, I believe it's one and a half miles of, of pavement. So we're going to get all of that and then, and then some additional done, hopefully. And then, I don't know if you'll hear about this. If you do, just as an FYI, Barney Reservoir, um, is being lowered. They're doing some construction on the boat ramp going down into the reservoir. Which is really kind of a non-issue for us, um, because we don't use all of our Hague Lake water, which Barney eventually circles around and goes into the 12th River. But you just might hear about it because Barney Reservoir is going to be really low. Um, it won't have an effect on Hague Lake, however, which is where we get our drinking water. So there's no reason to be alarmed per se, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that. So with that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Jesse. Yeah, I actually ran into, I was out and about today in Hillsborough and someone I ran into says they live at Casey Meadows neighborhood and they were so excited about the 26th Avenue improvements. They're like, oh, it's almost done. It's so good. So yeah, pass on, big thanks to Greg. Okay, um, I'm going to try to keep my remarks concise, but, uh, give you some good information because we're a little over time and we have another work session. So, um, Washington County Corning Committee met on the 17th of June. And Sherwood is the only municipality that's asked for an expansion into the urban reserves. They have a Sherwood West Concept Plan. Um, so they're applying to Metro's UGBD expansion. They have 1,300 acres. They would like, some of the highlights is diverse land use, connected to transportation, more parks and green space, a variety of housing needs. Um, you know, they got me right at, I think they have, they've had 13 different community engagement activities. They're, um, looking at cottage, uh, cottage clusters and, you know, mixed or multi-generation family housing. Um, looking for incentives for right sizing SDC fees, um, and some other sources. So that's what's going on in development, uh, with our neighbors in Sherwood. Some really important things, ODOT, it's summer road construction. And so I-5, um, let me be really specific with the I-5 Bridge. And north, I think it's in Northwest Portland, it's going to be closed Sunday, June 28th through July 1st. And so ODOT's really asking municipalities to tell their community members to try to avoid I-5. Uh, the I-5 Bridge at that, on those dates, there's going to be some overnight closures on Brookwood in 26, Oregon 217. You might have noticed that starting tomorrow, Verbor Road is going to be closed for a few days. So, you know, I just, you know, a friendly, I feel like, I mean, I don't need to like mother you or nag you or micromanage people, but just a friendly reminder that this is the time where ODOT does big road construction projects. And then also we live, um, in an agricultural area too. And so just be, you know, patient and nice to people who are helping us eat and, you know, grow our food. So there's going to be more farm equipment on the road and more closures. You know, I did attend the Washington County State of the City with Chair Harrington last week, Thursday. And we also had our Washington County Chair plus Mayor meeting. So I think that, you know, that some of the takeaways I think that are really important for the city of Forest Grove to understand right now, and I'm going to just try to summarize it. There is a whole lot of compression and pressure on Washington County's budget. They are very constrained right now. They never had a cap. I mean, I was shocked when I became mayor and I was going, I'm like, what do you mean? You don't have a capital improvement plan? Like they don't have a CIP, so they're now just starting a CIP. So I'm not going to go into all the details of it, but where this hits us is with our library and our MISTIP funding. Right, so they pulled some MISTIP fund, some funding that usually in the past has been reserved for MISTIP to fund their general budget, their general fund budget. So, and now they're looking at funding mechanisms and have, have hired a consultant for funding the library. Right, did more funding come from a levy and less funding come from, you know, the county? Well, I mean, it would be a county levy. So I'm just want to kind of highlight, you know, the importance of keeping, you know, I'm being pretty vocal. You know, my, my thought on the transportation thing, and I said it in a meeting and I don't think it was very popular. It was just that this is, this was voted, MISTIP funding was voted in in like 1987 by the voters and prescribed for transportation. And our transportation needs are not going away. Our maintenance needs are not going away. And so to take from something that was dead, like I think it was brilliant. Like I think it was like, and you know, it seems very fair in the way that the WCCC recommends for districts and making sure projects are in each of the districts. The whole, this whole time, I'm like, wow, this is such a cooperative collaborative approach. I've been, I am very happy with how it's always been run and I would just like to see it continue to be run like that. You know, there's like a little bit of feeling from some of the mayors that the commissioners are saying like, oh, well, you guys are more advisory. Like we don't have to follow your recommendations with the, what you're saying with the WCCC. So just keep your eyes on that. The timeline for, so we had a presentation about the WCCLS budget and, um, but, and they haven't really made a recommendation, but they're going to come to us with more, um, more information hopefully soon. Uh, the MEAC, my Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, met again and we consistently have about nine people attending meetings. Oh, go ahead, you had a question?
Before you go on to that, uh, do we know whether or not the Maple?
That supposedly, sorry.
Is that still funded?
Yeah, that supposedly should not be impacted by any of these things because that already had the site plan and already has been, so that still should not change even based on the difference in funding. So that's great news. Um, okay, so our Mayor's Youth, Mayor's Youth Advisory Council met and I'll just give you a little highlights from their meeting. They're working on a voters' registration drive. And they're going to partner with, uh, um, the youth organization, the political group at Pacific. Um, they already wrote an email to Morgan, who is the advisor there. They are interested in service projects. So if, when you go to, um, you know, so for Chamber with the, um, corn roast, they would be willing to volunteer or if anyone has on any of their commissions or any of their organizations' service projects, uh, we have a group that would like to be included. I would just also like to tell city staff that, you know, they definitely want to be included with park designs and they have opinions. So I was like, well, is there anything else that you guys want to work on? And one of the, um, members said, well, I'm concerned that the Vic, there's no more plots for the Viking House to build a house. And so she was asking if there was a way the city could make a policy to, like, like when, if something's annexed, like reserve spaces for the school district to build those houses. I don't know, but anyways, I thought that was very interesting. Like, uh, those are some of the questions and concerns that they come. Every time I go there, they bring up topics I would like, would not even have on my agenda, so it's good fun. So, um, I think, and then, yeah, I think that's all I have. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council and we will reconvene in one minute for our last work session.